Chairman, you're ready to begin the meeting.
If we could, please, let's call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is August 27th, or August 22nd, I apologize. Looks like we're about 12 after 6:00, a little late. Again, I apologize. Let's get started. We normally start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge. So if we could stand, move your hats, we'll... Due to the issues that I encountered, and I'll say the same prayer as I did last, the other night, the issues that I encountered last week, I pray for those who are experiencing hardships physically, mentally, substance abuse, emotional. There are many, many I encountered. I give them all the strength to endure and find some peace in our earthly life. And then, second part, I pray for the protection and the preservation of life in all stages of life. In Jesus' name, amen. Could it pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I know this is a continuation of our meeting starting Tuesday. However, since we have a change in commission members, we need to kind of go through the process. So what we'll do, we'll go through a roll call, because we have a different group here tonight. If you could, Wendy, please.
Danny Wilcox.
Here.
Kevin Kirkwood.
Here.
Van Sands. Van Sands, absent. Eric Carlson. Eric Carlson, absent. Mike Buck. DeeDee Shot Grace. Robert Politik.
Here.
John Gresham.
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Reminder, turn off your cell phones. Okay. Next is, I think we'll forego staff report. I don't, I think you covered that the other night, correct, Mark? And consent agenda. So, this section of the meeting is designated to public comments outside of any application being heard tonight. Okay, seeing none. So, we have no approval of minutes. So we're going to start into our hearing process, and this is a continuing, continuation of Tuesday night, which we ended around 11:00. We were in the public comment section. So, at that point, the other night, we ended with public comment from, I believe, Sonny Mills? Thank you. Okay. Now, I have a number of people on this list, and I am going to ask anyone out there. So anyone who has any intention of commenting on things, asking questions, I, that opportunity will be presented to you. We will not go through until we have heard from everyone. So, at that point, the next one on our list was actually Nick Meyer? Sir, please. And if... If, if we could, what we've been doing is we've been asking people to please... Please.
Good evening, my name is Nick Meyer, 27510 Richard Circle. Oh, there it is. Nick Meyer, 27510 Richard Circle. I have three questions to everyone, and really, I just want them on the record. I don't know that you guys can answer them, but I want, I want to put them out there, so they're on the record. What and where are the detailed plans to ensure that the infrastructure, roads, intersections, schools, septics, et cetera, outside of the development are maintained without increasing my taxes or the taxes of other Elbert County citizens outside of this, ECE East, and other track home developments? Question number two. What and where are the plans to financially accommodate the increased need for additional first responders, fire and sheriff's deputies without raising my taxes and the taxes of other Elbert County citizens outside of this and other new track home developments? Third question. What and where are the detailed plans to ensure that the additional developments do not affect the county's water table as the state no longer guarantees that water will be available for 100 years? Does and will the county accept the risk and liability that comes along with the increased demand for water for this development? Again, without causing me or other Elbert County citizens a financial burden if and when the water table is diminished to the point of having to drill new wells or truck water in? I don't know if anybody can answer those. I've been to your website, there's none of that information there. The Comprehensive Master Plan does not include that information. I'm working my way through the documents that are on there, elbertcounteeast.com. Haven't found them yet, so...
I think the answer to the majority of your questions will be in the second presentation regarding the service plan for that subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Nick Meyer. Next one, and I'm going to go down this list from the other night, and then I'll switch over to our new list. It looks like we have Kathy Goodman. Peter... Demias? Is that correct? Peter? No? Okay, Dog Channel, Dog Channel, ECE East. Jeff Edwards? Sir?
That's a quick question before my time starts. I originally planned two comments, one for the PUD and one for the... So, I, I'm not going to take a full six minutes?
We're hearing both together.
Yeah, so...
So please, if you could, keep...
And if it would be possible, could we bring up the preliminary plat?
I think they probably can.
Thanks. So I'll just go ahead and start in it right now. Chair, members of the commission, I appreciate all the work that you do, and I know that you have many voices in your ear right now. You have the county, who is employed to make sure that, you know, these developments happen, and then you have the developer over here that wants the development to happen, and then last, you have us, the community members. And we don't have fancy studies or attorneys, but we do have our daily experiences, living, driving, and experiencing the infrastructure around the proposed site, which the developer definitely does not, and I bet the county employees don't either. We are the experts of this part of the county. That's my wife. Thanks, thanks. There are three reasons why I think you could easily make a recommendation to deny this. The first is the road infrastructure. It's not there to support this development. We got County Road 174. It is not, it is a natural option to travel west. Yep, County Road 74, it's, it's not, it's a dirt road, it's not gravel, it's dirt. It's, it's a poor dirt road. And when it rains or snows, only the most skilled drivers. I don't know if you've been down that road, you, you probably have. You've got to be skilled to make it through there alive. At one time, 174 was on the capital improvement project list. I don't see it anymore. It's not there. And I think it was, it was like a 10 to 15 year out, it was 30s, 40s? I, I don't know, it was out there a ways. The current plan, I think, only goes five years, and it's not on there.
I don't know.
Another road that we actually take, 162. 162 has a single lane bridge, and that is, you know, I like it because I can take my kids over, it's bumpy, it's fun, but it's, I'm scared at times to make sure that bridge stays up. It, it is on the capital improvement list, but not to be replaced. It is going to have the guard rails fixed, and maybe some painting of the columns. So 162 is not a great route. The developer mentioned that 166 will eventually come through, right? With, with development. Man, that's, I don't know when that's going to happen, but that would be the time, maybe we, we look at this application again. Once 166 comes through, the development is caught up to this area out here in the east. Of course, the developer will say that this is, this is a phased development over 20 years. We got 20 years for the infrastructure. You know what? I've been here, I went, I graduated high school back in 99. I've been driving these roads for a long time. Yeah, that, that's not going to happen in 20 years. And of course, they're going to probably say, you know what? We got, you got Kiowa Bennett goes to the north. Well, in, in the comprehensive plan, it says, "Elbert County's transportation system endeavors to provide the safe and efficient, safe and efficient and convenient mobility of the current and growing population." Second, our school district is nowhere even close to being able to absorb this type of a development. The developer talked about a new school being potentially built. It hasn't even been approved yet. It still has to go to the ballot. That's already failed. It's failed once, so it's, who knows if that's actually going to be built? And when it is built, it's not going to be built to a bigger capacity. It's going to be built to the current capacity.
Pardon me, Chair, that's three minutes.
Again, if I could just have an extra three, that'd be great.
Please, if you could.
Also, the district doesn't have bus service. Can you imagine all these new residents driving into the town of Kiowa? And even if they did go to the new school, it's going to bog down the entire 86, like there's, there's no way that this amount of residents can go through, because everybody has to be dropped off. It's not like you can just shove everybody in one bus. No, it's all parents, driving in, dropping off. And the current mill levy of the school district is, there's no way they're going to be able to increase their capacity through capital improvements. They can barely cover the maintenance and the current operations that they have with their current mill levy. And also, the fire district, not even close. They said that there's two, there's two different stations. The one up north, they might use that when they're up north to go to the bathroom. It ain't being used for anything else. Okay, lastly.
Last one, please.
I'm not saying that this development should never be developed, but it should be developed once the infrastructure is caught up. That would be the responsible thing to do. And on the plat, I can't imagine the developer's going to pave all of 53. Right? Not going to, probably not going to pave all of 53. Why, why would you have so many exits onto 53? And why would we realign it? Now, residents on 53 have to come down, stop, turn left, come down, stop again. Why? Why would that be there? And lastly, the school location. Why would we put the school location on a busy, what will eventually be a busy road, 166? All that's going to be developed probably to the south. I'm sorry, buddies out here, it's going to be developed.
All right, sir.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I have.
Okay, we've got County Roads, thank you. I think a lot of your questions will be answered. Okay, so, Jeff Edwards. So, we're at... Hayden Porter? Do we have a Hayden Porter? Couldn't make it? Okay. So we have Elizabeth Buck.
Good evening. I am here today as a concerned resident to address the... Elizabeth Buck.
Hi, I have...
10933 County Road 120, Kiowa? Sorry about that. I am here as a concerned resident to address the proposed subdivision, and I urge you to consider these points before making a recommendation. First, this project is incompatible with surrounding land use. You can redefine the word compatible all you want, but we all, as citizens, know what that means. Commercial and retail zoning does not fit with the rural character of this area, and this development will disrupt that balance. Secondly, I'm a little confused. When I was here on Tuesday, I was listening as well as I could to the things that you guys were mentioning, and I feel like at one point, it was mentioned that the roads would be privately maintained. And then a little while, like 10 minutes later, a different gentleman said that the roads will cost the county about $65,000 a year. So I'm just sort of confused. And forgive me if I'm a little skeptical about the private maintenance portion. We have seen other developments shift the burden of the roads to the county, and I fear that this development will be no different. I didn't hear anything on Tuesday about our county's endangered and protected species, and the project will likely harm the local ecosystem, so I hope that you all understand that that deserves some serious consideration. It is my opinion that we should allow the developments that are currently underway to finish before moving forward with new ones. Once those are completed, then we can assess whether or not these are truly needed. Many long-term residents, such as myself, are concerned that Elbert County is at risk of becoming an extension of Aurora and Parker. And we value our rural character and lifestyle. Lastly, I urge you not to rely solely on the studies paid for by the applicants. Their results will naturally align with the developers' interests. If this project is to proceed, I respectfully ask that the committee require the applicants to fund independent studies, that the county will choose the experts who do these studies. I'm sure everyone in this room hopefully knows that the Elbert County Sheriff's Department is woefully understaffed and underfunded. So I obviously am concerned about safety being the first thing that I'd like some independent experts to look into. And then after that, obviously, the roads and traffic safety, and then the environmental impact specifically on our endangered and protected species. And then lastly, and maybe more importantly, water availability. So thank you very much. I just ask that you carefully consider these points. And we deserve thoughtful, balanced development that protects our environment and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Shannon Sprague.
Hi, Shannon Sprague, 42024 County Road 53. I have three points in these three minutes. I think I can do it. First, ECE East is not a fit for us. Will the public trails and parks be designed for and allow horses, dirt bikes, ATVs? Those are the things we like. Will the open space allow ranching, grazing, hunting? That is the open space we want. Do we shop in Lodo, 16th Street Mall? No. Do we drink our morning coffee while sitting at a bistro table in a coffee shop? No. Do we enjoy our peace and quiet with sounds and views of wildlife along with nighttime stargazing? Yes. Communities come with more uplighting from outdoor lighting on houses, landscape features, streetlights, business lighting, parking lots, parks, I can go on. All light reflects off this pavement, asphalt, and surrounding buildings, which ECE East will have a lot of. ECE East is not a small community. It is projected to be three times the current population of Elizabeth. Stargazing will be a thing of the past. Outdoor sounds will become city sounds, traffic, accidents, crime, safety concerns. And instead of wildlife viewing, we'll be seeing people, too many of them. ECE East will not be compatible with the surrounding land uses. It cannot coexist. Next, ECE East is not good financially for the county. Expenses will outweigh revenue. The application says 2,400 units. Census shows an average of three people per unit. That's 7,200 people. The census shows 28,000 people in Elbert County. Therefore, ECE East is just over a quarter of that. The annual budget for Elbert County 2023 shows that countywide revenue is at 41 million. That budget also shows just under the 41 million in expenses. If ECE East says it will bring 3.7 million in ongoing revenue, but yet it's a quarter the current population of the county, shouldn't it bring in more like 10 million? You know, 41 divided by four, 10-ish? ECE East, it will generate 2.2 million in ongoing expenses. Again, if it's a quarter of the expenses of the county, that's closer to 10 million. The 3.7 million applicant's projected revenue will not cover the county's projected 10 million in expenses. Lastly, experience and track record. You want the right person to do the job. The right project to meet the goals. What has the applicant done in the past? Has it succeeded? Do they do what they say they're going to do? Did they deliver what was promised? Did they satisfy everything that was proposed? Is it a new venture for them to create a new community in a rural area far from services and amenities? I understand ECE West is moving forward. Independence is underway. Spring Valley. The county can use these current projects and developments as examples and concrete evidence of how they can help or hinder the county as a whole. I believe it's reasonable to ask the county to do research, more options, research more options, and wait until current projects are further along and realize and analyze these aspects to the county, analyze the impacts to the county, and simply see how they pan out before accepting something that could be a disaster that the county can't recover from. Thank you.
Thank you. Trina? Trina Smith?
Trina Smith, County Road 154, and it's 1142154. I want to thank the panel that's here. I want to thank you, as the advertising committee, for this development. You're very well-educated.
Trina, could you step to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Oh, can you? Oh, so sorry. You're very well-educated, superb vocabulary, a time when words have power, and I appreciate all you did. You gave us lots of information, I will say that. Okay, what's my expertise? Age. And I have lived in Elbert County since 1970. Along my road are my two neighbors that I have known almost the same amount of time. And with us, we have 100, almost 150 years of experience. We've lived it, we've been here, we've been through all the trials and tribulations. 1970, our population was 4,000 people. Okay, my concern is the fire department. They are a very, very small unit. I don't think you have any idea how small they are. They have three shifts a day, and they have two people on duty each of the three shifts. So living in your development, what kind of service do you think they can give you? They cover 324 square miles of residents, our dear residents in this county. If you have a car accident, you can have two responders. Douglas County, you can have 13. In the last 12 years, their call volume has tripled. As you see, their staff has not. They have been able to use volunteers in the past. Volunteers are becoming dinosaurs, and people are not wanting to volunteer. It's not the thing to do anymore. Big competitiveness with Douglas County. Their staff, certified staff, can get approximately $30,000 more. Don't you think that's nice in this day and age with our economy? Response time, I think you should think of that, because you should think of the people who are buying your community. We live a ways away. We have snow. We have had ambulances go to the hospital with a snow plow in front of it. And they tried to hand off at another county line, and it didn't work. They had to take that person all the way to the hospital. You're adding a lot of people that could have problems in a snowstorm.
Pardon me, Chair, that's three minutes.
I have one minute left? No.
Please, Trina.
Okay, bottom line, we're little, and you don't know how little. Thank you very much.
Mark Zanker?
Good evening. Mark Zanker, 13281, Antelope Pasture Point. Basically, right across the road from this place. Big thing I want to talk about is, we're looking at this thing like it's just all by itself. You mentioned, you know, the county needs to grow 3,000 new residences and stuff like that. What about ECE West? Between ECE West and ECE East, you've got almost 5,500 residents being built. That's 15,000 to 20,000 people in its 10-mile area of Elbert County here. I mean, that's bigger than Elizabeth, Kiowa, all the rest of the towns put together in the county. And we're going to stick it right out here in the middle of nowhere, you know, in the northwestern part of the county. You're not talking about all the other developments that are going on. Look at all the housing in Elizabeth already. You're trying to, this, the population of this county is going to double in the next 10, 15 years if you go ahead with all these developments. And if these developments get, if they get bought up, if people come out here in the middle of nowhere to live. Basically, that's, that puts twice the strain on all the facilities. Everybody's mentioned already, you know, the fire department, medical services. You've got 20,000 people out here. Where's your nearest medical service? Nearest medical service is in Parker. That's a half an hour away. If you're lucky, if you've got decent roads, which, with all this traffic here, I mean, every time we get a flood, they close down half these roads because they flood out the bridges. You can't travel. So all these people, why don't we wait until we see what ECE West comes up with? See how they do? I mean, you've got all these developments trying to be done all at the same time. Why don't we do a staged approach, say, let's do one big development at a time? ECE West is, you know, projected to be 2,800 residents. Why can't we do that and see if they get bought up first? Once they get maybe to the 75% fill rate, or even 50% fill rate, then look at doing another development. Because right now, you're doing development after development, not knowing if they're going to fill up and how it's going to be, affect the services and all this other stuff. Let's go slow and do it the right way, instead of trying to throw everything here together. You know, this is, it, it's just, doesn't seem right to throw 20,000 people into a small, little 10, 10-mile area along this area here, when you've got the whole rest of the county that's going to be basically left alone. And, you know, sometimes you say, oh, we're just like you people here? Well, you guys don't live up here. So, you know, it doesn't affect you the same way it's going to... So, you know, it doesn't affect you the same way it's gonna affect us. And, and that's, we moved out here because we want to be away from people. We want to be away from the towns. We don't want to live right beside a town that's bigger than Elizabeth. If I wanted to live, be around Elizabeth, I would've moved down there. We don't. Most of us here want to be out here. And all the, the wildlife and stuff like that, twenty thousand people is gonna affect the wildlife, period. There's no way it can't. Like I say, you mentioned the lighting. I can see the lights from, you know, Denver and stuff like that. Imagine right across the street, all the lights that's gonna be there. You know, you can have downward-facing lighting all you want, it's still gonna shine. And, you know, we got Wolf Creek right beside there. You're gonna chase all the wildlife out of that area.
Pardon me, Chair, that's three minutes.
That, and like I say, twenty thousand people. You've got crime coming in, you've got all sorts of other stuff going on. You gotta look at all that stuff, not just EC West, EC East by itself. You've got a lot of other stuff going on. Look at the combination of all that stuff together. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Chrissy Howell?
Hi. Do I need to give my address for your records? Okay, my name is Chrissy Howell, seventy-one, thirty-one, South Shenandoah Drive. So, I live in Sun Country Meadows. This is a one-to-five-acre, um, community. We have bridle paths behind each one of our homes. I would, I would consider it a ranchette type of neighborhood. Uh, one of the things I'd like to touch on here is above and beyond a community like this and like Independence. They have gone above and beyond. Sun Country Meadows, although we have bridle paths for riding, does not offer even remotely close to the open space and natural scaping that you see in a development such as this. These people have gone above and beyond on multiple levels to address natural scaping, wildlife access in corridors. And I have witnessed and been, um, able to see horses trailered into Independence, and it was awesome watching these people bring their horses in and ride with the kid on his bicycle right next to him. Uh, the trails out there are amazing, and they're not manicured, they're natural. And I have seen deer out there next to people's homes. This is definitely a respectful, um, area. They consider the historical values of the communities. I know that, uh, every time that any of their developments have gone in, they've also, again, gone above and beyond the, uh, infrastructure. A lot of people are concerned about that. I know everybody witnessed the repaving of Hilltop. That, uh, blacktop there was, uh, far exceeding the levels that are required for that type of road and the, uh, amount of traffic that, that move along that. Uh, so, I, I want to say that as far as the master plan and requirements for the county go, these people have gone above and beyond. And I believe that without a doubt, and with ethical standards, that you absolutely cannot do anything other than accept this application to go through. I would rather see a community like this come in than see a bunch of stacked-upon-zero-open space or manicured open space with no respect for wildlife and no respect for the agriculture that we have here. We need to work with the people that respect our community. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Debbie Olem?
Debbie? So, Debbie Olem, one-one-one-nine-five, Copper Canyon Circle. I just want to say that, you know what? The people in Kiowa Bennett are really getting it stuck to them bad right now. They have Excel trying to march down their road. They are about to end up with three thousand homes in their backyards. They need you guys to stand up to them. I, you know, eight months ago, I came to the county and I asked them to do a moratorium. We knew all these were coming down the pipe. There's ten thousand homes in the pipeline right now. Do we need ten thousand homes? I don't know. I don't think so. And I'll also tell you that I've openly spoke out against the metro districts and the effects that they have on homebuyers. I personally have met with Tim Kraft. I think he's been very honest, very forthcoming. He's been very good to work with. I can agree to disagree on different things. We worked hand-in-hand on the Kiowa water, and he was very resourceful and very helpful. Um, so I don't hold any of that against him. He's been a great help to the community. But I am seriously concerned about the traffic, the influx of kids to the school. And as I serve on the Fire District Board, I will tell you, everything Trina said is right and more. That two people at every shift, A, B, and C, if one of them goes on vacation, we don't have a responder. You've got somebody driving ambulance, who's gonna be in the back? We have a chief that does CPR in the back. You're not gonna find another district around that their fire chief makes what ours makes and has to get in the back and do CPR to save somebody. You guys need to consider what stress you're putting on the community. I get it. You know what? I'm a Realtor. I make my living selling homes. There will always be homes to buy and sell in Albert County, with or without these subdivisions. Honest to God. You know what? I, granted, we all could buy the land next to us if we wanted to keep it away. We'd all have a coupon book, and we all do. But I want you to consider the problems that come with this. I know these developers come in and they meet the rules. Maybe it's time to change the rules. And I know if they meet the rules, you can't deny it. But by golly, I hope you'll at least put stipulations on it where it pays for itself. The impact fees don't go back. I'm sitting here with an impact fee for seventeen thousand dollars for a building in this county. I didn't get mine to go back. Why do theirs all go back? Somebody needs to do some digging and ask some questions. And I'm asking you to ask the hard questions. Don't let all of the developers and Excel and whoever else wants to march down Kiowa Bennett. It is a busy, busy road. I live right on it. I can count the semis that drive by in a day.
Pardon me, Chair, that's three minutes.
Thank you for your time. You guys have a tough job.
Last one on the list here I see is Betsy Edwards.
Uh, Betsy Edwards' address is four, can you hear me? Four-one-six-five-zero, East County. Now, I can't even think of my own name because of this east. Um, County Road fifty-three, Kiowa. So, I'm right across the street from this development. Good evening, members of the board. I stand before you and today to express my strong opposition to the proposed housing development. This project significantly risks to our community, particularly to our small fire and school districts. The consequences could be severe if we do not fully consider the financial and logistic impacts of this development. One of my main concerns is the strain this development would place on our already limited ability to fund essential services. The high property taxes expected within this new development would create a tax base that could skew the broader community's ability to secure necessary revenue increases. Our school districts are currently seeking to increase taxes to maintain and improve the quality of education of our children. Approving this development now without securing that tax increase first could make it far more difficult to garner the community-wide support needed. The disproportionate population and tax contribution from this development would dilute the voices of the existing residents, who may find it hard to support or pass, pass the necessary tax measures. Another issue is affordability of homes within this development. Homes with property tax rates that are nearly double, those outside of the metro district, are far more less accessible to many families. These higher tax rates could price out residents who might otherwise afford homes in areas with lower tax rates, further complicating the economic dynamics, dynamics within our community. This raises the question of whether this development is truly serving the needs of our residents or, or simply catering to a select few at the expense of a broader community. In addition, in addition to these financial concerns, the di- the distance of the proposed development from essential services like schools, fire stations cannot be ignored. This distance not only risks slower response times in emergencies, but also imposes additional burdens on families and increases operational costs for an already strained district. This development is simply too far removed from the services it would rely on, aspirating the existing challenges. It's important to remember that our county has a significant amount of undeveloped land much closer to these services. Developing in these areas would be more cost-effective and sustainable, ensuring that our infrastructure can handle growth without over, without overextending our resources. In conclusion, this proposed development should not move forward without careful consideration of its broader impact. The school district is actively seeking to raise taxes, and this development could complicate or even undermine those efforts. We do not have a luxury of passing tax increases with a smaller number of voters, unlike the new development, where a concentrated group could more easily infuse it and influence these decisions. For the sake of our community, financial health and well-being of our essential services, I urge you to at least delay approval of the, until these concerns are adequately addressed. I also just want to say, I really am disappointed that we had to move this. There are many of my friends who couldn't be here to express their concerns. Please try to give us more time to talk and be heard. There are people who can't be here. Delay it by three weeks, hear the community. I'm not the only one, I just am the only one who can get here. Thank you for your time.
Okay, at this time, that ends. Who we have on the list? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Sir, if you could, give me your name, address. You know the drill, please.
Don't start the clock yet. I'd like to thank every one of you for being here. And I see a lot of my neighbors and friends here, and it really is great to see a good turnout. This is an important project, and it affects the county. So, here's my name. I'm Bill Howell, and I live at seventy-one, thirty-one, South Shenandoah Drive in Sun Country Meadows. And, um, just like to start with, uh, I've heard some very emotional, very heartfelt things from many of my neighbors here, and, uh, there are some that I agree with. But I really want to focus tonight on, uh, economic impact other than the developer's impact. Um, I'm part of the partnership, the Albert County Partnership, and we've, we've interviewed over forty contractors and builders, many of whom are donors and contributors to all of the things we care about. And in detail, through roundtable discussions and a lot of other things, um, we've identified between three and four million dollars coming into the county just from Independence alone, uh, from new residents and from, you know, visiting contractors. It takes about fourteen trades to build a house. And, uh, I'd like, I'd like, if anything, I want the, any developer to come into this county to focus on using local contractors. And I think that's very, very, uh, important. Um, I'd like to say that, um, the most common thing expressed from all those meetings was that they, they've all seen a huge positive economic impact from the development that's already happened in the county. So, Spring Valley, Independence, whatever you want to look at. Um, I interviewed, the last person I interviewed was two nights ago. This was a server. And, um, she said that she lives in a rented mobile home. And about eight months ago, uh, or even a year ago, she said that she, she couldn't dream of, of buying her own house and was, you know, really having a rough time. And within the past few months, she told me her, her tips have doubled. And kind of joked with me that she makes more money than her bo- her boss now. But, uh, it, it, it changes a life when you see people coming into the county. And, you know, nobody wants willy-nilly bunch of growth. But I see this as something that's not gonna be a ten-to-twenty-year, even thirty-year build-out. Uh, market saturation and market current trends, this could be a fifty-year build-out, could be a sixty-year build-out. If you look at Spring Valley, they still have a hell of over six-hundred lots to sell. And that was approved in two thousand and eight. So, if anybody thinks we're just gonna all of a sudden have tons of people and all kinds of congestion, it's just not gonna happen. They'll be lucky if they break even in twenty years. That's how I see it. And many, many of my, uh, clients are in the real estate business, and many of my friends. And they'll tell you the same thing. Right now, we've got two percent, I think, available housing in the county, and they're pretty spendy. Uh, if you try to buy a house on five or ten acres, it's gonna cost you over two million dollars. Easy, in the county. Uh, we've seen a lot of economic impact, I just wanted to speak about that. As far as the, the, uh, the developer goes, I've met with them as well as all the other developers. And so far, Independence has been an amazing, uh, uh, community. I know a lot of people who've moved there.
Pardon me, Chair, that's three minutes.
Is that it? Oh, come on.
Three minutes, yeah.
So, what I'd like to end up with is, I, I've really enjoyed the Independence community. They built it. And, uh, while they didn't build it, they, they put it together and the builders built it. But I've really enjoyed being there, and it's, it's meant a lot to my business and all of my friends. So, thank you.
More comments?
I only got three minutes. Can I add my last?
Well, didn't you speak the other night? Sunny, go ahead. Uh, we have another person coming up. Sunny, hold on a second.
Hello, um, my name is Dan Rosales. I'm at thirty-six, seventy-two Deer Creek Drive. And, uh, I'm here to support the new subdivision. You know, when, when I was in the planning commission, we, we went through a lot of these. And one of the things that you always look at is, what does a developer bring to the community? And I'll tell you, what they're doing here, what they've done in, in other subdivisions, they have always improved the value of, of our county. When you, if you talk to people and ask them, what kind of subdivision would you really like to have? And a lot of them can't even give you a response to that, but others will name things that are being offered in this particular, uh, community. Uh, I, I think if you want to do a wish list, and what do you want in a community, you, you've got it here. It, it, it's listed here. I've heard tonight, s- some people saying, uh, we're putting too many people in a small area. And yet, others were saying, we, we are putting these subdivisions in areas that should be open and, and free from housing. Uh, again, those are two opposing views. And, uh, I think when you stop and think and look at what is being offered here, I don't think you can find another developer that'll have the vision, the, uh, will, and the proven record to deliver what they, what they promise. Uh, you talk about one-fifty-eight and how they paved it and improved it. That was something that was never asked for part of, of the subdivision at Independence. But that's something that they stepped up, and they saw that, that, that was something that should be taken care of because it was the right thing to do. And they did, and they used the best materials and really fixed it up. Uh, I think that pretty much says what the intent and, and, and the credibility of, of these people who are trying to build a subdivision. So, uh, let's look at what is really there and not is, what if, what could happen. Look at, look at the facts, and I think you'll, uh, you'll find that approving this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Sunny Mills?
We shouldn't.
Can I fish?
We really shouldn't give you another option, but go ahead. Sonny, we really shouldn't give you another option, but go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't make my last point yesterday.
I think you've got two rounds yet.
Sonny Mills, 27310 Forest Ridge Drive, Kiowa. So you create stipulations, and I think one of the stipulations has to be that they actually got permission for all the water underneath their development, including the Dawson. And I think we need to make sure that in the future, if they need more water, we should deny them the Dawson completely unless they get permission through the commissioners and the planning commission, and there has to be some kind of process to access that extra water, because that was one of the things they wanted to use, the Denver, but who knows? We've run out of water in this county before. And so I also think, as a stipulation, that all the contractors should start a fund for all the individual well owners, so that if our wells decrease because of overuse, then we can have a fund in the county that would help support our drilling further down in the Dawson. That was my last point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment?
Good evening. I'm Leslie Smith. I live at 12243 County Road 154. And I'm concerned about this proposed development of ECEast as a third-generation Albert County resident. This high-density urban development is not compatible with the surrounding area of agricultural and residential areas. If approved, this development will add twenty percent to our current population. This single development will add immense impact to our community, and with all those people, they have to go to work. It's noted that ninety percent of our residents work outside the county, and that will substantially increase the traffic on the Kiowa-Bennett Road and the east-west roads to Denver, Casserac, and the surrounding areas. The one-lane bridge on County Road 162 over Kiowa Creek is identified as Project 76 that needs replacement. The 2021 cost of replacement is $973,000. How will Albert County pay for this? Keep in mind, that's one of thirty bridges in this county that is deemed that needs to be replaced. The Albert County Transportation Master Plan states, quote, "Single-lane bridges will be choke points in the transportation system as traffic volumes continue to increase." Many of these bridges were implemented after flood events and have been in place for decades beyond their intended life. This is just one of forty projects that are not anticipated to be funded through known funding sources that have been forecasted through fiscal year 2040. The Transportation Master Plan states, quote, "These projects will need to be funded through other mechanisms, such as federal or state grants or by developers, if they rise in priority by 2045," adds noted on page seventy-three of the Albert County Master Transportation Plan. ECEast is not in line with the spirit of Albert County or its residents. The Albert County Comprehensive Plan states, "To preserve the open space and preserve the rural character of Albert County, clustered residential development patterns are encouraged on and lands within one mile of paved roads and existing utility corridors where they exist and within the three-mile service and/or influence of county towns." While clustered development is encouraged in the county, typical land subdivisions result in large lot subdivisions between ten and thirty-five acres. The three towns within the county have the potential to support further development as these areas provide minimum public services and basic supply requirements for residents and business owners and are located along major transportation corridors. That is your words out of the Albert County Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Thank you.
One more thing. Residents have indicated that the rural atmosphere and beauty of the high-plained grasslands are primary reasons they have located here. Those are the words published in the Albert County Master Plan Housing, that's on page two. I completely agree with those sentiments that were written many years ago, but it's still what holds our county. That's why people come here, they value the open space. I recommend, not only, before you consider a project of this kind, we need to recommend a study of the value of agriculture to this county, the number of jobs that are tied to agriculture in this county. The one page in the master plan is insufficient. Residents value the open range, and they're going to, if this goes through, what is going to be one, the selling points, the open space around it provided by each one of these taxpayers around it. They're going to sell their view based on our land.
I did not catch your first name. Leslie. Leslie. Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none. So here's what normally occurs. Do we need a break for a minute? Or should we go right into rebuttal and answering questions from the applicant and staff? What would you guys like? Pardon me? You want to go into rebuttal about down here? Five-minute break? Five-minute break. Let's give a five-minute break, we'll be right back. Okay, at this point, what we do is, we ask the applicant and our staff, we're going to go through and try to address each one of the points that were brought forward. So what I'll do, I'll ask them a couple of things. They're kind of grouped into, you know, a lot of similar points. So I guess to start, we need to address, one, I heard comments about the taxing structure and how that, the taxing and funding structure you have within that development, how it impacts surrounding citizens. Okay? That is the one. I heard that Tuesday night, and I am really concerned that actually that message is out there, because it's not a good thing. So if you could address that, where are the taxes, how your subdivision is funded? Okay, that's the first thing. The next thing is, you spoke, and I don't know if you can get into them at this point, everybody talked about roads. 174, 166, Kiowa-Bennett, all of them. What's the other one? Fifty-three. Fifty-three. Been on them all. Tough roads. So if you could address the future plans and improvements to those roads, and when that timeframe comes in. plans and improvements to those roads, and when that timeframe comes in, because I know you mentioned them in your application. And I do know that some of that is also determined in the SIA, which is in the final plat, and I don't know if you can go into a lot of that, but if there's any way you could, it would be really appreciated. Okay? Because that was a big issue. The next thing I go through, and they talked, we talked, I heard a lot about fire protection, emergency services. You heard it. If you could address the concerns, however, I know emergency services, it was signed off. I saw, you know, Kiowa Fire signed off on this. So I, you know, maybe through impact fees and what you offer to emergency services, kind of what comes out and what you're open to doing. The horticultural needs, I'm going down through here, you addressed that in your initial application. I remember somebody stood up and spoke and actually detailed your pathways and how we're gonna integrate that into natural surroundings and the same stuff. So if you could address that. Let's see. Okay, yes, and going back to roads, you handled this site differently than you did others. You actually set this development up as private roads, and you were funding the infrastructure and the long-term coverage and maintenance of these roads within this subdivision. So if you could explain that, because I think that's something different than I have seen in Independence and other developments that you have brought forward to us. Okay? Well, and that's gonna be covered in the others. That's covered in the SIA, and what fire protection, school district. Heard some concerns about the school district, and you have a site for the schools. I see that, if you could try to address that, and your interaction with the school district at this point, to this point. Let's see, lighting. You also did a whole segment on the lighting and how you planned on kind of dealing with the lighting so it wasn't, wasn't obtrusive, wasn't a passive lighting system. You addressed that in your presentation. If you could go over that. Let's see. And water. You know, there was some concern, and water's a big issue, I know. There was some concern, somebody mentioned it, that you would be drawing from the Dawson, and I didn't even see that anywhere in the application. Your primary draw is from the Denver, for both, for all your water, the infrastructure, everything. And deeper. The Laramie-Fox Hill, yes, okay. So please detail that, because I think, you know, most people out here, most people out in that area are running off Dawson wells, upper and lower Dawson, and that's what feeds most of our homes. And I know there's concern that eventually that will draw from the other, there was a good presentation the other night on the stratosphere of the aquifers, and it really detailed it well. Okay? Maybe bring that back up, so they understand how that, you know, will leave yours, should leave your wells alone. That was one. The one thing that did, did come up, local contractors. That was a, I would say, a good comment. So is there an intent to use local contractors? And I don't know. So, and I don't know that that doesn't come in until the building phase. Okay? Now, the next thing, and probably one of the things, this is on, you have the ability to sell homes, I know it came up a number of times, prices of homes in your subdivision. Now, I know prices of homes come along with, and you have to include the metro district fees on that, that's all determined at time of purchase, that's all calculated in. I wanted to know if, when you bring these builders in to sell these homes, and I don't know if you do, do they establish lower interest rates in selling homes in these areas? Because that leads to the affordability of homes. And I've gone to these sites and seen, so that might address why you still see many homes being sold in all the areas, in Gold Creek, Independence, Spring Valley. They're moving. So, now, you guys, did I cover most of them on your list? But I want to be sure these get answered.
I said I would probably make it a blanket statement to cover the concerns as a citizen. I know you were taking notes as well, so please do try to address. I have a whole list of concerns that were created as well, and I'll be going through, taking them off, and I'll ask questions if we get to a point where we don't cover anything off, or cover one of the elements off.
And at this point, this is, this section of this hearing is for you to address the concerns from, that we heard from each and every one of you. So then the next section will actually be, then will come from us, and our comments will go towards you. Okay? But at this point, if you could, please, so, with that, it's a big list, sorry.
So, yeah, and I believe it's probably a partial list, so I'll, let me address your list, and then...
If you got some more, great.
Well, or if you have other questions and things, we'll try to address those. So this, we'll do our best with the list we've got so far. So I think roads, obviously, has been a big theme, and we'll kind of start with that. And Chris McGranahan, who is with us, is our traffic consultant. I think there was a question about whether the county just relies on our consultant. Chris starts with a study, knowing our detailed information. That goes to, currently, to a group called Kimley Horn, which is a large, national engineering firm. They are hired by the county. We pay their fees as a part of the application process, but they report to the county. We have no direct interaction with them, and they evaluate what Chris does. Chris has done a number of projects in the county. Kimley Horn has seen, I would guess, most, if not all of them, in the recent past. They've been there for a while. So Kimley Horn really is the one that drives that. We don't, we have not asked for any special dispensation, any special accommodation. We kind of follow what the codes and the, you know, there's some pretty straightforward information on how impacts are calculated, whether we agree with those assumptions or not. How many trips are generated per household and things like that. When triggers are identified to either require a turn lane, to improve an intersection, all of those kinds of things. So it's not just lane miles, it's intersection performance, it's, you know, turn lanes, all those kinds of things. So that's what is evaluated, and it's evaluated as units, and therefore impacts are projected to occur. With all of the other projects around, the one caveat to that is not projects that have not been presented to the county. So if you're not aware of it, obviously, those aren't being counted as impact. But all, anything that's out there, it's called background traffic to our project, and then our projects added to that. As I think you indicated, the SIA, there's a process in the county that, once we leave this process, if we were to move forward, we then put together a plat, and a plat is a small subset of that typically. And those impacts are identified. So let's say it's 100 units. Those 100 units are identified, and there's a determination of how many trips that'll be, and it'll say, you know, it has a conflict at this intersection. So then we, as the applicant, are required to make certain improvements. Those improvements have to be made prior to us getting the first permit of those houses. And that's why we don't go for a plat of 2,000 homes, because we would do improvements for 20 years ahead, and that road wouldn't last that long. So as we phase and we bring in pieces of this, there's a determination made of the impacts and where that goes. In addition to that, every home pays to the county an impact fee, a traffic impact fee that is north of $8,000 currently, and it changes with inflation. So I presume it'll go up in the future some. We tend to look at things in constant dollars. Fees are today's dollars, costs are today's dollars. The, those fees then are really at the county's discretion as to, I'll call it the regional system, as you leave our area and you, you know, drive over near county line on Singing Hills or something. They, those, they can apply those where they see fit as things are, you know, needed. And that's not our determination of priorities or how things get done. So there's kind of direct impacts, we'll fix, Kiowa Bennett Road was brought up. That is a direct impact to us. We will fix that road. And when I say fix it, we will improve it, we, it's not current code as it is, so we will have to regrade it, do all the stormwater, you know, make connections to it. All of those things will have to be updated for us to build this project specifically. The SIA is a mechanism that goes with every plat that outlines our commitments. So in the SIA, it will say, you're bringing 100 units, you're having this impact. It covers a number of things beyond roads, but roads specifically. It, that, when I go in for my permit to the county for a first home, they'll check all the boxes on the SIA, and they will not let me start a home, let alone build a home and bring people in and have impact from that. So that's kind of how that mechanism works with, at the county level. The same thing, they'll check the box, did I pay my impact fees? There's, you know, you have language even on a plat, or on a PUD, where we have to pay all our fees and all those kinds of things before it's allowed to be recorded and approved. The transfer issue, or question, the roads in EC West and ECE East both are, they're technically not private, but they're not dedicated to the county. So our district, so I just want to be clear, they're open, anybody can drive on them, they're not gated private roads. They're built to county standards, they're just as if we would dedicate them to the county, and the county has the right to step in and review our plans and inspect the work after. These are county standard roads. But our district will own and maintain them in perpetuity, and that's why the district is set up, because, you know, the developer won't be there forever, but the district will stay in perpetuity to run and manage the community for a number of reasons. Roads is one of them. That's a significant change. There was a question about, why are we saying we're gonna keep the roads, but yet the county's gonna pay certain amount of money? That was in reference to off-site roads. So we are doing improvements to off-site roads as well, Kiowa Bennett Road, for example. And so that is still a county road. We're not taking ownership of that road, but we are gonna improve it. And so then there's maintenance in the future, and mill levies that are paid, property taxes that are paid to cover that. So the only point in that was the improvements we do off-site are paid for by the revenue that is generated as well. Yeah?
So if I may, just to like, put a bow on that and bring it back to the criteria, right? So as Jim just described, this project is going to construct and maintain all of the internal roads. It's also gonna construct all of the off-site road improvements that are required to accommodate the development. So, right? And it is also going to pay impact fees to the county that the county can use for regional road improvements at its own discretion. So bringing all that back, like, the standard that you're judging this by is, does it create unreasonable traffic congestion or create a burden on the road system? It does not. In fact, it will be a net benefit to the road system, because it is not only constructing all the roadways needed to accommodate its own traffic and maintaining all the internal roads, but also contributing to the county's fund for its regional roadway improvements.
That was a little more clear. So, moving into then, fire and schools, and we certainly understand that, you know, in today's world, the existing facilities for both fire and staffing and budgets are, they're struggling. We, we're not just dumping all of these students and all of these impacts onto them without the support. And we've talked at length, I think there was a comment, we've only met with the school once, I meet with them weekly. It's, we are working through a process of figuring out, how do we advance money to them? Because some of it is timing. We pay a, we're discussing paying, we don't, we're not approved yet, so we haven't paid anything. But we're working with the school, just like we did with the Elizabeth School District, where we pay what's called a fee in lieu. It's technically not an impact fee, but sometimes you think of it that way. It's a fee per house that goes to the school. And again, over the next 10 years, we're not, we won't even have houses starting until probably 2028 or later. We're, this is a big ramp up. We have to build a lot of infrastructure, wastewater, water facilities, build roads, all those kinds of things. The, there is open enrollment in the county, so, you know, kids won't necessarily all go to the Kiowa School District, but that is their home district. And we want to support them, and we want to work with them, and we'll continue to, you know, have these conversations about what is the impact fee. The, that fee is a calculation of a student generator, how many students over time will we put into the system, and then that translates to a land dedication. The, our requirement is to dedicate land for schools. Not all school districts want a bunch of land, and so then you can quantify what is a fully finished value of that land, and then divide by the number of homes, and that's kind of your fee in lieu, if you will. We are talking to the district about holding out a site that is not a part of that calculation. We will pay our full fee in lieu, but also have a site that could be a future elementary school that would feed into their bigger system. That's where we're, we've gotten today. We will continue to work with the school district. We have a great relationship with the Elizabeth School District. We're, we work with them on a lot of projects outside of their primary schools, including the auto shop and other things that they're doing. It's an important piece of our community. We, we want the school system to be healthy. We want the fire system to be healthy. That's, those are very contrary to us wanting to come in, build a big community, and I think somebody said, have a fire district that can't serve us. That, we, because we have municipal fire flows, our insurance rates are lower, our, you know, do, the builders do buy down rates, so people are coming in, you know, buying houses at, you know, four and a half to five percent interest rates in a market that's, you know, arguably a little bit higher than that. All of those things kind of make the ecosystem healthy for a community, and that's what we're trying to do. There's, it'd be very short-sighted of us, again, to have any of those struggle. We can't fix everybody's, 100% of everybody's problem, but we do want to be a part of the solution of that.
So again, just coming back to the criteria, right? The one that relates specifically to this issue is about, will not... The one that relates specifically to this issue is about will not adversely impact the provision of public services. And for, in this county, like in a lot of places, those public services, like fire and school, provided by third-party districts, not by the county, right? Their primary source of funding is property taxes. And there were some folks who asked, well, gosh, how can I be sure that my property taxes aren't going to increase in order to provide the services needed to accommodate this new development? And the answer is actually that this development is going to help ensure that property taxes of county residents who are already here would not have to increase in order to accommodate the needs of the school district. As, as new valuation increases, right, as, as these homes get built, and the total valuation within the whole district for the school district increases, that generates additional property taxes for the school district and for the fire district. And that's some of the data that Andrew reported on in his analysis. And that means that the school district, instead of having to contemplate potentially an increase in the existing tax rate, will have an increase in its overall revenues because there will be more value total that's being taxed. So it's actually a net benefit to all those third-party service providers to have new construction. If there's no new construction, then the only way for them to get increased revenue to meet the needs is to increase taxes or, you know, the very small year-over-year annual increases that come by the biennial reassessment from the county assessor. I don't know, Andrew, do you want to just add your numbers on?
Sure. Thank you, Carolyn. So just to quantify the themes that Jim and Carolyn have been talking about, the schools will benefit by 2.4 million annually at stabilization. That's 24, $20, $24, so those are today's dollars. That amount of money will come into the school district as a result of the assessed valuation in this project. Similarly, the fire district has about half the mills, a little less than half, 1 million annually of net new revenues into the fire district. One other point I just want to emphasize is that the team, the developer will pay the impact fees. 23.4 million total impact fees will come into the county. And those are for projects, they have to be of a regional nature by definition of impact fees, but those are independent of the improvements that will be made specific to the project. The last thing I would say is that, one other point on the schools is that the developer's going to pay that fee and contribute the land. Rarely do you see both. Usually by lots, one or the other. Here you get both.
Okay. Moving on to a couple of other topics on the water.
Would they?
Yeah.
That is all limited to people within this development.
That, that is correct. So again, it's set up in a way that we... We, we can apply fees because we are the landowners, so we can choose to impose them currently upon ourselves. As a new resident, they, you know what you're, if you don't like that, you don't move into that community. If you're, if, if you see the value of the benefit of the things it brings by charging those taxes, then you, you know, consider moving in. We don't have the authority to go one inch outside of our property without them choo, you know, electing to come in. And that, you know, like, in the future, that's certainly possible for our water, wastewater systems. We have the ability to serve other people, but they have to elect to come in. We cannot force them to come in. Did that answer your question?
Chair, your microphone, please. Your microphone, please. Thank you.
That person living across the street will see no change in his tax value whatsoever or his tax payment whatsoever. It depends on the value of his house, his or her house. That individual will see no change in their tax structure at all. Their mills will not change for anything.
The mills will not change. I can't speak to the value of their...
Yeah, we can't speak to the value of homes. Well, we can tell that about the last...
What, what they're being charged, the, the rate they're being charged will not change because of us. It might change for other reasons. And again, somebody mentioned on the school, they're potentially looking at, you know, issuing a bond and raising a little bit there. That's their determination. They have to vote that in. That, again, has nothing to do with us.
Okay, so that, I think, answers, Sonny, your question.
Um, the, on the water, we have not, and we will not, and we do not go into the Dawson, upper or lower, that's not, you know, we possibly talked about kind of, you know, some recharge concepts and other things, but that's going the other direction. In, in this project in particular, and EC West, we're actually designing into our water treatment system, the ability to go into Laramie-Fox Hill. So for those who don't know that, that, it's not the lowest, but it's, it's da, upper, lower Dawson, Denver, Arapaho, and then Laramie-Fox Hill is below that. It gets down to a level that the temperature's warmer, there's some things with it that are just a little bit different that we have to plan into our water treatment process to bring that water into the mix, and we are planning for that. I, I don't, we haven't gotten there yet, we haven't drilled anything on site. But that's, again, we're thinking almost reverse of like, lower to higher. We do, we are required by the state to have different aquifers just as kind of backup in a municipal system, so we will be in more than one, but we won't go any higher than the Denver. Any, let me rephrase that, any shallower than the Denver.
Is that so?
Microphones, please.
I, I said that we will not go any shallower than the Denver. If I'm not phrasing that correctly, we're not intending to go shallower.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah. And that's something that the commissioners on prior projects have requested as well in, in the past, and so we're, we're aware of that, we're designing to that, and we understand that. Local contractors, absolutely. We, we have brought in high school students, we do internships, we try to encourage, obviously there, there are a lot of contractors in this county that are quite small and, you know, work off of their properties or work kind of in smaller groups. That makes it a little bit more challenging for us to, you know, fully engage them, but we absolutely want local. We encourage our residents and we hold events into Elizabeth and Kiowa. We, you know, that integration is important to us. We will continue that. We believe as we grow and the, you know, kind of having the two projects together, EC West is a little, is more residential-driven, and East, you know, in order to provide retail and commercial opportunities and to grow some of these businesses, we need the one project to kind of start and get some rooftops to really allow that. You know, Kiowa Bennett Road, that is part of the economic development overlay zone, that area was encouraged by the county to add some of that type of activity. That needs kind of both of those to really be able to grow and thrive. We believe the good thing of this, they are phased and planned. It's just not physically possible to develop five or six or 700 lots at once. It, it may be in some areas, but here, the challenge with the soils, the materials, the permitting process, all of that, we can, you know, get through about 100, 150 lots a year to deliver into the market. And so what that does is it gives a nice, long life chain for contractors. They can start to grow, they can hire people knowing, you know, every year there's going to be 100 homes to work on. Those are the, you know, that's, this is all planning. This is, we're not, we don't want to put in all of these roads upfront. We don't want to do all of those improvements. We are going to design and build our water, wastewater systems to be phased, not at 100-unit increments, but probably 400 or 500 unit increments. And we will design a larger footprint, but then build and grow through that. Again, that really allows businesses and financial institutions to invest in those businesses, knowing there's a future out there, as opposed to kind of a one-time, you know, hey, I've got 10 homes I got to build, and, you know, you hire three plumbers, and then the next year you may or may not have that. So that, that gives a nice roadway to work through that. We're also encouraging local businesses. We are not a big-box place. This project is not going to have a Walmart on it. It, it just, those entities look at far more rooftops in a bit, much bigger area than, than we could support. We were talking to local residents about kind of a marketplace, an incubator space, things like that, that will allow people to come together, do what they're doing currently at their existing properties, but grow and add an employee or two. This, this isn't a, you know, an Amazon warehouse or some, you know, huge facility like that. That's, needs to grow organically up through there. And again, that will just take a lot of time to kind of grow into that. Dark sky compliance and then wildlife, is it? The, the dark sky, it, it's a tricky one, because there are safety issues. And when we work with the county at our independence project, there are certain intersections that just need to be lighted. They are downward-directed, lighted, you know, it's true, you can see the lights. I mean, I, there, there is a need to light certain areas. We don't light all our streets, we don't light all the neighborhoods, and we have pretty tight restrictions on what can be put on houses as well. So there is a balance. There's certainly going to be light there, but it's not going to be like what you see kind of looking into the metro area. That is evolving and that's changing, but it's, it's still, you know, the diffuse light that goes up, you know, most of the lights are kind of, go in every direction as opposed to straight down. It's a lot more expensive to do that because you have to place a lot more when you downward direct it to do that. But that's, you know, that's kind of the balance of, of what we have there. And again, on wildlife, we're, we follow, we have a great environmental engineer. They look and give us recommendations on how to manage where to have flush zones in our open space, so we don't just have open space, it's a big open field. We have some pretty broad corridors, and in the middle of them, we don't put our trails. We don't, we, we plant certain things that kind of discourage people from making casual trails. We try to maintain our existing trails so that people stay on them. And, and, you know, we will have equestrian trails, we will connect with those around us to the extent that they're willing to, we can't force people to do that. But there, that's another important piece, that's, that's our amenity. That's what people want to have in experience. It is different. It's not the same as if you own 100 acres yourself and you chose to do nothing on it. It's, it is a shared open space, and so it, it is a little bit different, but it's a balance between, you know, kind of a more urban experience in there.
And both of those things sort of tie into the last comment that I wanted to address, Mr. Chair, which was not on your list, but that was the question of compatibility, harmony, rural atmosphere. So if I may just wrap up with that one for our rebuttal. There were a couple of folks who said that they thought that this project would not be compatible with the existing development, or that it wasn't consistent with the county's master plan. And there were some folks who quoted from the master plan. Obviously, the master plan's a large document, and it says a whole bunch of things in it, but one of the things that it says is that overall, conservation communities, which is what we're proposing to do here, are preferred over traditional large-lot subdivisions. And that's one of the reasons why this was elected to be put forward as a conservation community, because the master plan specifically says that that's the direction that is preferred in Albert County. And there were also some comments about why is all this development that's happening, not just this project, but other projects that have already been approved, all happening in this one northwest counter of the, corner, excuse me, of the county? And again, the reason is that the county's comprehensive master plan says that that is the area to which the county wishes to direct the majority of the growth, that that is the right place for it, based on the direction of future improvements, future availability of services, proximity to other existing communities, and so on. And so everything, all of the components, all the characteristics of this proposal are 100% consistent with all of that. The master plan also says that, that it, that long-term, the county would like to see a cluster of commercial and industrial uses along Kiowa Bennett Road. And as, as Jim just pointed out, in order to really create the need and the demand for businesses to locate there, you've got to have a certain number of rooftops. And so both of those components of this project are in furtherance of that goal of the county comprehensive plan that says, this is the area where we want to have some more commercial and some more industrial. And it's, you know, it's only 48 acres of each in this general area, out of 1,290 acres total, so like, like Jim said, we're not talking about a massive, big-box, you know, shopping center here, but this is exactly following the comprehensive plan in terms of creating that opportunity for a node of commercial activity to serve this area, the county. And then in terms of compatibility with what's around it, a couple, right now, all of the zoning around it is either agricultural or rural residential or rural agricultural. And what is being proposed here, and this is a good slide for us to have up for this conversation, because as you can see, with the clustered development that's part of the conservation community, all of the residential development, all of the vertical construction is to the interior of the site or to the west along Kiowa Bennett Road. And you have these very large contiguous areas of open space that are designed not only to serve as wildlife corridors, like was just described, and those wildlife corridors, by the way, are a minimum of 200 to 400 feet wide. Some of them are as wide as 1,400 feet. They're based on data and analysis of the existing wildlife patterns, and so they are actually designed to accommodate and encourage and preserve that opportunity for wildlife. But they also serve as a buffer to all of the surrounding properties. And so you can see on the north, on the west, on the east, there are some extremely deep buffers, and those range from 50 to 80 feet, some of them are as deep as 500 feet, to create distance, green space, open space between the closest, most adjacent properties and any actual vertical construction. So that's another way in which this project is compatible with everything that surrounds it. And the views and the open space that are, you know, being marketed to the future purchasers of these homes is the open space that's being created right here on this very property. And so in all of these ways, this project is delivering exactly what the county said it wanted and needed. It said that in its master plan, it said that in the, in the code and in the zoning regulation, and it's delivering it in the location that the county said that it wanted and needed. And that goes to a couple of the criteria, but most notably, the consistency with the comprehensive plan and consistency with the zoning regulation. So unless Jim wants to add anything, maybe I'll just close on that and go to the questions?
Okay, thank you. One thing on the comprehensive plan, maybe Mark, maybe you can answer this. Is any regulation contained in the comprehensive plan?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair, Mark Denreter, Director of Community and Economic Development. The comprehensive plan is a non-regulatory document, it's a guiding document for long-term vision planning for the county.
Do you know why it was a non-regulatory document?
Do you know?
Well, yeah, yeah, I do.
I, I can, I can add, though, the, by state statute, counties less than 100,000 population are not required to have a comprehensive plan, but Albert County believes it is important because part of planning for a plan such as this and the execution of a plan does involve a fair amount of public engagement, community input, which is a vital part of that plan. So again, the county... so, again, the county has for many, many years now, elected to participate in having a plan such as this. The current comprehensive plan, formerly known as a master plan, was last updated in 2018. Some experts would advise that every five years approximately, it's a good idea to update that plan, and we, the county, are currently, we currently have a request for proposal, an RFPs issued, seeking bids for a contractor to assist us in a comprehensive plan update, which we will commence later this year, and that process will continue more than likely through the middle of next year. So, we're actually excited to get an update on this plan.
That'll be ours, okay. The other thing, I think, in statute, they recommend that the comprehensive plan not be regulatory in any way, because what they don't want to get into is a conflict between your codes and ordinances and the comprehensive plan. So, when you go about looking at building in the county, whatever process, you reference your codes, and that's your zoning codes and your subdivision codes is what exists in Elbert County. And that's primarily why they want the comprehensive plan as a non-regulatory document. Okay, that is, pretty much, and you can go to the statutes under Planning Commission, and you can read that, and that's one thing the Planning Commission is tasked with, is maintaining our comprehensive plan, which we will be doing soon. So, okay. You went through all the questions. Now, folks, did you have anything that was requested by the citizens that they did not cover? Do you have, go through here. Now, this is specifically that, listening to each and every one of you, I want to be sure we covered all the points, and I think we've got a bunch of people with notes up here, so I'm trying to get them all, be sure we covered them all.
Sure, just a quick point, or a couple of quick points. The first was, there were several mentions of endangered species. Wow, I'm really loud on this one. But, they mentioned bald eagles, but that was the only endangered species that they mentioned. Has Colorado Parks and Wildlife weighed in, done studies associated with the wildlife in the area. You mentioned flowing through the pathways. I count and see roads across, blockage roads across all of the existing area, so I don't see a true pathway for wildlife, as I'm looking at this, but that's my opinion at this point, so have you done the studies?
Yes, we, it was not a Colorado Park and Wildlife study, it was a full wildlife study. I don't know exactly where the reference to the eagle's nest is in location to our property, but there is a pretty good riparian corridor along the creek there, to our west, on the other side of the road. There's definitely wildlife in there, and, you know, there are kind of corridors where the wildlife will move across the property. We did not find any, there's, there are no trees on the property, so there are no nesting birds on the property, but we did a full study there, you know, they'd look for the Prevel's mouse, they look for all kinds of different types of, either endangered or watchlist species, and there are none on the property.
You guys, do you have any other notes that, oh, go ahead, Van? Well, our questions we'll answer. Van, we're gonna, I'm gonna do a whole section on that.
I just had one question regarding the roads. The state maintains 86. As a matter of fact, the county can't even touch it. I asked them one day if they could pick up some garbage there, and they said, no, you have to go to the state. So, I'm assuming that some of this money that comes through in the impact fees, et cetera, is gonna go to the state, to get them off their butts and get some of these roads fixed?
I cannot be tasked with getting the state off their butt.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Kiowa-Bennett Road, I believe north of the county line is a state highway, but the section that goes by our property is actually a county road.
Yeah.
It should be a C.D.O. road. And I think there's a conversation to be had there, but yes, there is money that goes to the state for roads, and the, what we bring to the table then, is you could take some of those impact fees as the matching money to leverage, you know, state contribution. Yes.
Yeah, because it, I know that the state highway does not go past your property, but it will be used, that's the one thing, so.
Agreed.
And I'd like to see it get fixed, so.
Yes, we agree.
Anybody, Mike? You guys down there? Seven? Seven?
I think we've covered them.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I will call public comment closed, and what happens now, then, is we go through each one of us, and questions will be asked of staff and the applicant of the concerns or comments that we have. So, start at the end of the table, Van?
I've already done one.
Okay.
Okay, I have a number of questions. My first two are for staff. Are we being asked to recommend approval and evaluate this application based on no response from our building department, our sheriff's office, and our public works department? Because in the packet on page 176 and 387, it says, we have no response from those critical departments in regards to an application of this size and a development of this size. I don't see how that could be recommended for approval without that input from those departments.
As you know, the part of the application process, the referral process, involves the issuance of the application to various internal departments and outside agencies, and if we do not hear a response back, that is, the interpretation is that there were no concerns.
No objections is, no objections, but no response technically is no concerns, but on a development of this size, we didn't get anything from those three departments. Zero concern, nothing.
That is correct. The way we interpret it with no, no comment would be no objections, and that is up to the individual departments and agencies, if they wish to respond.
Okay. My next question is in regards to the amount of homes in our current pipeline that have been approved or pending approval. For example, some of the subdivisions, like the Balance of Independence, the Balance of Spring Valley, E.C. West, Alora, Ridgewood Estates, and I would like to compare that to our current Elbert County Housing Needs Assessment Plan of 3,050 homes that the applicant referenced in their, in their study, and in their presentation, because I'd like to hear how many are in that pipeline.
Thank you for the question. This venue here is, we're discussing, obviously, this particular application. To have that kind of information, that is something that I would need to provide and prepare to address. We're talking about this application tonight.
So, I'm aware of that, but to me, that would be like having a checking account, and you're asking us to write checks when you don't know what the balance of your checking account is.
Okay.
I think that's a pretty fair analogy.
Thank you. I also believe with all due respect, it's fair that we come prepared to a hearing, and we're hearing a given case, and we will respond to this case, or my department, staff, are willing at any time to sit down and talk about specifics, and I think it's reasonable and fair to not use a public hearing as a venue to attack staff.
You're asking us to vote at a public hearing. That's pertinent information to adding another application of this size, and a new development of this size. I think that's pertinent information. When our housing needs assessment calls for 3,050 homes, I want to see if I can compare this to what those needs are, and if we're just building excess homes for the point of building excess homes, or if it's a needed development.
I'd be willing at any time.
If you don't know.
Mr. Planning Commissioner, to, I'd be willing at any time, Mr. Planning Commissioner Buck, to sit down and talk to you about any and all, any and all concerns, topics that you have. Again, talking about some of these issues where, you know, it may require some research and homework, not everyone may be as well-equipped on the fly as others to respond to questions that do not relate to a case that is being heard tonight, and pardon me for that, if I'm not able to answer that question now, in a public hearing. And we're not talking about the topics that were just addressed, we're talking about ECEs, PUD, and preliminary plat.
Well, the Housing Needs Assessment was brought up by the applicant, so I thought I would elaborate on that, and find out what our needs are as a county, and what we currently have in the pipeline. I thought it was a pertinent question, but we can move on.
Thank you, sir.
So, I had some additional concerns with the comprehensive plan, our strategic plan survey. It appears what we're doing is we're picking and choosing which part of those plans to use and to evaluate, when some of them say, hey, they support this development, and some of them say they don't support this development. So, I'm not even gonna get into the fact that all four sides are zone ag. The comp plan is calling for a three-mile service area for cluster home developments close to towns, county towns, you know, our comprehensive plan is a guiding document, and that's what it says. If it's four miles, let's, okay, maybe, but these are eight miles, eight and a half miles for Kiowa, 15 miles from Elizabeth, and 21 miles from Parker.
Four.
I have some minor questions in regards to minimum lot size. It says no minimum lot size on any of the lots. Can you answer that question? And I noticed there were setbacks, so I was a little confused, okay, well, there are setbacks, but there's no minimum lot size.
So, on the question, minimum lot size?
Yeah.
There are, the reason there's no minimum lot size is because there is, there are attached, you know, there are, like a duplex home would have a zero lot line, and there are, you know, the potential for apartments or multifamily that would be, you know, units that are not on individual lots.
But it didn't say those type of units, it said any unit. Any unit, page 296.
No, I understand.
298 was in reference to commercial lot lines, and then page 300 was in reference to industrial lot lines, or lot widths. So, there was no minimum lot width on any of the development or building styles.
Is your question, is, does it really say that?
No, it says it.
Right.
I just go to the page, what does that mean? What is, they can have any size, no minimum lot width?
I think that's what it means.
Yeah, I mean, the intent is to have the flexibility to put the type of product that is needed in there, whether it's, again, an attached product, or something else. The market, I mean, we won't have four-foot-wide lots, I mean, that, it's just not feasible, and there are side setbacks.
Yeah.
So, you know, within that is some flexibility to kind of design the product that makes sense, again, if it's attached, or, you know, multifamily, or something like that.
I was just confused on how that was presented, just saying no minimum lot width, but you had setbacks, and I was like, okay, well, that's a little, I was just confused by that a little bit. Landscaping, I feel, needs to be warranted for three years, not two years, with the drought situations, and I was in the landscaping business for years at one point in my life, and the environment that we have here doesn't always accept new plants and have them take root deep enough to survive after just two years, so I did notice that. And then, integrated accessory dwelling units, it says does not count in the unit count. So, I understand that, but I don't know how many buildings are you proposing that may have the accessory dwelling units?
So, again, that, we don't know how many, that's a product that's built in Independence. It's a, it's a product that had, that looks like a regular house on the outside, regular, I mean, a single-family detached house, but there is a bathroom and a bedroom area that has a door that separates that, so it can be, you know, what we found is it's more family, either kids, or aging parents moving in, or handicapped people who live in there.
No, I'm aware of what they are, I just didn't, if you had any idea of how many of those, at this point, you might not know, I was just wondering if you had any idea.
So, what we typically have seen is about 20% of the larger, single-family detached lots that you see in there, so 60 feet wide lots, or larger lots, I don't know exactly how many of those.
Pardon me, Jim, could you speak more into the mic, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, that's, you know, anecdotally what we've seen. It has increased in popularity because of changing family needs.
So, maybe 20, maybe roughly 20% of the large lots? Maybe, I'm not hoping into that number.
Correct, yeah.
That's all I had?
That's all I had, Danny.
Commissioner Buck, just to follow up on the Housing Needs Assessment.
Yeah.
The one thing I did want to point out is, that assessment was a 10-year assessment, and most of these projects are much longer than that. I cannot tell you what the pipeline is.
It was, it was a foreseeable decade.
Correct.
It was a 10-year assessment. I just felt the pace.
That's correct.
I mean, we just approved E.C. West, we got a lot of stuff in the pipeline, and I just kind of wanted to flush that out a little bit, was how much we actually had in the pipeline, and kind of compare it to the housing assessment. That was all I was asking.
Wanted to go over the fire department a little bit. There's been a lot of concern, this is gonna increase the fire department's response time. I don't believe it will. The, I've been, in Elbert County, I've been on the fire department for 30, 35 years, and the more that it grew around Elizabeth, the shorter the response times came. So, I believe this, that with that many people moving in, you may get one or two more volunteers, and with the tax income that they're gonna receive, they'll be able to hire more people. So, I think, I just wanted to leave people's fear that it's not gonna hurt their response time or the fire department. That wasn't really a question, but.
And the other thing I want to just add to that, if that's all right, is, we have a cross, not we, the Kiowa Fire Department has a cross-support agreement with the Rattlesnake Fire Department, and the Rattlesnake Fire Department is, they have a substation fairly close to this project. We've met with both fire chiefs together, and they feel like that they'll be able to, you know, support each other in responding.
Just out of curiosity, what does fairly close mean?
It is at...
It is at the corner of 29 and 174 and we are at the intersection of 174 and Kiowa-Bennett Road. So that's about a mile and a half down the road. Three miles.
Good evening and thank you for asking, answering all these questions. I have one question that's bothering me because it's in my wheelhouse. The commercial stuff that you are allowing for the 48 acres, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Would that commercial include like a urgent care facility that could be installed out there as well?
Yes. So we are actively planning with two separate health systems, UC Health and Health One. They will not, well, I shouldn't say they will not, they are not likely to build a hospital. What they do in today's system is build these satellites. What we're actively pursuing is a combination of primary care, physical therapy, and urgent care. And those three kind of fit together in a facility. The physical therapy kind of activates it on a pretty regular basis. The primary care, they'll rotate days with OBE and a primary care physician.
Right.
So.
That's what my concern is, is that if you would allow some sort of a medical emergency place to take some of that.
We, yes, we not only want to allow it, we are trying our best to facilitate it.
Okay, well, that's great.
Just a quick question about the financial impact. I thought, I heard someone say that you're hoping to start selling off properties in 2028. Is that correct?
Yes. So what we're looking at now is this part of the entitlement this year, next year would then be the design of plat. And then we will have to build water, wastewater facility, all these things have to get to the first permit. And then we, the next year, we will develop land and then start to build, you know, the first homes, which will likely be model homes, so they won't be occupied. So yes, 2028 is when you'll start to see rooftops that will be for sale to the public.
And with regards to that, the financial benefits or the financial revenue potential, I believe your financial guy was talking about at full scale or at full load, you know, the revenue generated for that, for the county. Do you have any sort of breakdown? I haven't had a chance to go through the whole packet. Do you have a breakdown, starting in 2028, what those yearly revenue impacts would be?
Yes, we do. And what Andrew had gone through was kind of every, like, two-year increments. We've looked at five-year phasing increments, so 2025 to 2030, 2030 to 2035. So we have both of those kind of increments showing kind of the scale of that.
Do you remember what page it was?
We can pull up a, do you want to see the revenue slide?
There were four, three or four slides.
Yeah, I have questions on your slides.
And it was a really informative slide that showed the economic side of this, this whole process.
Yeah, since I was watching from home, I didn't have. And it had that one, it had gray and blue, if I'm not colorblind. Yeah.
Commissioner Politek, could you put the microphone closer to you and Chairman, please? Thank you.
Go ahead. You asked a question. That's it, right there? Okay.
So, Commissioner, what this reflects is you can see early on that the fees that are coming in are really from construction. That's the gray and the light green on top. Then property taxes start to come in, you know, later in 2030 and beyond. Property taxes are shown in 2027, 2028, and that's really just the increase in value of the land.
Right.
And then as homes come on, those grow and then at, when it levels off, at the end, the impact fees fall off because those are one-time per-unit impact fees, so then they go away. The sales, I'm sorry, the use tax, it actually will continue on in the future because there are, you know, remodels and other projects and things, but it's just not from new construction. So we didn't reflect it then.
Okay. So, that revenue, does it dovetail, in your mind, then to the perimeter improvements that you're going to make on, let's say, the roads and so on, in conjunction, in allowing then the county then to be able to support those improvements that you've made in the roads? Did I say that right?
I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
So internally, as you know, we do the maintenance on that. So that's, that goes away. But the external improvements, there was a slide earlier that reflected what that estimated cost would, incremental cost would be to the county. And it was about $67,000 annually for the additional maintenance on the new improvements.
Okay.
And there is, yeah, there is a net, $1.5 million of revenue beyond the additional cost.
Okay.
All right. This is the culmination of the analysis and the blue is the revenues.
This is the one that the guys like the colors. I got it.
And the gray is the expenditures. The project will cost the county dollars in terms of servicing it.
Right.
And we wanted to be accurate and realistic in terms of what the revenue's in and what the expenditures out look like. And you can see the T align is the net conditions between revenues and expenditures. And the last five years in this slide show stabilization at 1.5 million net positive revenues to the county.
So when you say Elbert County, are you also including the special tax districts for the, for fire and sheriff?
We have that verbally here. This chart is just Elbert County, but we've got the projections here in terms of revenues.
And for those special tax districts to help alleviate some of the public concern, is it also positive or is there, you know, is it net-net? What is it?
We studied the county. I don't have the expenditures for the districts.
Oh, okay.
But the fire will generate approximately net, a revenue of over a million at stabilization above what they have today. And then the schools are 2.4 million net positive above what they have today from the assessed valuation in this project.
And that was based upon a per-person or per-property expenditure based upon those tax district, the load, the, those special tax districts would put on the individual properties? How do you calculate that net positive?
Sure. In this, what you're describing is what we did for the sales tax in terms of a per-person expenditure.
Right.
In this case, because the revenue source is property tax, it was the assessed valuation. And so it's the absorption multiplied by the valuation multiplied by the existing mills.
Okay. All right. All right. Very good. That's it.
So I have 25 questions. I'm not going to go through all of them. But I couldn't help myself when I was going through the presentation. I'll start with the easy one. We mentioned that, or you mentioned earlier about improvements to 166. Are we talking about actually pushing that through connector between where it cuts off to 162 and then, and then back over? Are you going to close that gap? That's a pretty long stretch.
We are not. That, that is a kind of a countywide decision or when they go, I was referring to 166 between Kiowa-Bennett Road and 53. So going east, not west.
Thank you. That makes me feel better. The impact fees, when I read that chart, I looked at it and said, I guesstimated about 20 million in impact fees over the life of the effort. Is that close to the number?
Yes, we have 23.4 million is our estimate. That does not include the school fees again. This is really straight to just the county piece of it.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. How do you play into the schools? Because that's one of the concerns of the citizens was, how do we balance that back? Geez, this is a really good mic.
So the, this way that the school fee in lieu works is there's a student generator formula and you apply it to different types of houses and it's their formula, not ours. And then that translates to, you know, a portion of a school. So it's like one elementary, a half a middle, and a half high school, and that translates to land. Then we put a value to the land and we divide that by per unit and it becomes a impact fee per unit. Currently, we pay the Elizabeth School District about $2,300 a unit. In the best grant that the school put together, that was probably more than a year ago, they estimate about $2,600, a little more than that. So it's kind of in that range.
You would take about 4.6 million plus over the life of the project?
Yeah.
Okay. Flipping the slides a little bit, Mr. Lidle's presentation on the water left me somewhat confused. Number one, he had Dawson on there or Denver on there twice on his slides. I don't know if he's here, I didn't see him. But if you look at the slides.
So there's the Denver basin and then there's the Denver aquifer. I'm not sure if that's, and then, oh, yeah.
If you look at the projections for where he was bringing the water from, he talked about just coming from Denver and he had listed.
That one?
Denver twice there.
Yeah, so there's two different calculations of how the Denver is calculated at the state level. And so the NNT is not non-tributary actual, and then there is a kind of a surplus that we have to make up that they counted at 4%. It's like a system loss.
Okay, thanks. That helps a lot. I looked at that and I was a little concerned and a couple of things that he said bothered me. Reuse the water to extinction, as an example. I wasn't sure I followed what that meant and how that was used in this context.
So, some water rights only allow a single use and you have to return it. And so for renewable water, river water, other people downstream have the right to that water. So you, when you take it out, it kind of goes back to the old placer mining days of you put a gallon in, you take a gallon out. Because this is groundwater, we have, when we pull it up, we don't have to discharge it back to the land. We can basically bring it back for one more use, which is outdoor use at the home. And so when we reuse, he says to extinction, but we really only reuse it one time because that second use is applied outdoors. It does not go inside the home, so it's really only that second use.
And it doesn't migrate back down to any of the aquifers? It basically is gone at that point, right?
Correct. It gets absorbed by the plants and the outdoor uses and, what's that?
He's saying alluvial.
Correct. It can get into the alluvial. That is correct. Right.
Also made mention of, "Roos equal retail and prevent leakage." I think this is kind of a bedroom community for the Parker, Denver, Aurora area in terms of how we're looking at this. How are we actually talking about preventing leakage?
So, currently, that you are correct. Many people in the county go west, they go to Parker, they go wherever to get socks, to go to dinner, whatever the things they do. There is, you know, in Elizabeth and in Kiowa, some limited retail where that sales tax and those buying habits are captured. We are talking about businesses that we would have internally that people could then come here instead of going to Parker or wherever they might go. That, we're certainly not capturing all of that, but the leakage of people leaving the county to do their shopping, we would like to be able to provide a foundation for businesses to grow and capture some of that in, within the county.
But that would be a minor impact, right? You talked about no big box stores. You talked about, you know, King Supers, Kroger's not going to want to put a grocery facility in there. A lot of people still shop in Elizabeth, but, you know, it's not true leakage, just it's a minor impact.
We are anticipating enough critical mass to support a grocery store, but probably nothing larger than that format. I mean, certainly far less than a Target or Walmart or a big box store like that.
Okay, that helps. Thank you. I had one more. But I'm going to turn this over to my compatriot here, Dee, because I have one more question after. DeeDee, sorry.
This is really for the staff. I have several, sorry. I have several maps here in this, in my packet and they see, say, EC West on them. So I'm assuming that that's just a clerical error, but I need to, I would really appreciate it if we would correct those errors and send out a new packet with the corrected, I mean, we have an EC West and we have an EC, EC East and I'm, I can't even say it, let alone try to make sure that I know the difference of which packets I'm looking at. So if you could do that for the commissioners, I think that would be really helpful. This won't be the last time.
We can certainly do that and our apologies.
No, it's okay. It's just that this won't be the last time we're looking at this stuff, so I want to make sure we're looking at the right stuff at the right time.
Indeed, thank you. And we'll go through and clean up any errors related to that and ensure that it is reflected in the materials for the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Great. So, one last question, Jim. Tourism? You mentioned tourism. How is this going to help with the tourism piece?
I'm not sure what that's in reference to.
In your presentation, it was going to promote recreation and tourism.
I think.
Recreation, recreation I can understand. Tourism, not so much.
Well, those two are lumped together under the same category and recreation is really what I was referencing when I spoke to that because I was talking about how the, all the trails and all the open space are going to be open to the public, meaning that not just the citizens that buy homes in this development, but everyone else in Elbert County and beyond could ride those trails if they wanted to on their bicycles or horses or on foot.
Okay, but there's no economic impact for using the trails unless you.
Unless they stop at the coffee shop afterwards.
Nobody shops, stops at the coffee shop. So, one last question for staff to weigh into Commissioner Buck's comments about, if you have no answer, they tacitly approve of this. I've got two people in the building department, from, down from eight. I do know that you have a contractor or consulting agency that is helping the building department, but if you have two people that are looking at this kind of stuff along with doing their day job of actually doing the building, how do you reconcile that these people actually did tacitly approve of this project?
Thank you for the question. Your reference to the building department, typically, it's not common for the building department to respond to these type of applications due to the fact that the building department, the process for building department takes place at building permit stage, so that comes much later. So that comes much later. And that is the centric focus of the building department. Inspections, plan review, and those type of activities. So it's not typical to have the actual building department respond.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. But I also know that, you know, fire was another one, sheriff's department was another. And those are both critical and key when you're talking about adding somewhere in the neighborhood of 6,500 to 7,500 people or more, depending on how well you do it. So, I kind of hope that we change that at some level. I don't know that we can, but I hope we can.
Yes, and thank you again for the follow-up comment on that. As it pertains to other departments, agencies, et cetera, the planning department does not have control of these other departments as to whether or not they're gonna respond. There's a process, we put the referrals out, and those departments are independent. And if they choose to respond, that is up to that department or agency.
And I lied, I have one last question. The enforcing dark sky. I mean, I appreciate the fact that you're gonna put down lighting and things like that. But we're talking about apartment buildings and townhomes as part of this subdivision, or metro district. And so, when you have that, you're gonna have open lighting, you're gonna have a lot of lighting. How can you enforce dark sky on open windows?
So, yeah, our metro district that will be set up will have covenant enforcement authority. And they, you know, like in our independence project, if somebody were to install non-compliant lighting after they've moved in, there's a process of how we notify them. It's initially a call, then it's a letter, it's a second letter, and then they can start to find them. So the metro district has authority to manage the covenants within the community.
Okay, I really wasn't talking about installing additional lighting. I'm talking about open windows. And windows coming from the units themselves are going to bleed light out into the area. So you're not going to get a dark sky kind of scenario from those. And so to me, that's kind of an interesting question because there's probably ways you can solve it, but it's gonna require additional cost, it's gonna have shuttering, things like that that would have to be in place inside of the apartment complex, and also in the townhomes. Anything that's gonna shed a lot of light.
That is correct. And we're, we don't enforce within a dwelling. So we're not enforcing or looking for windows or shades being open. If you're referring to lighting in the complex itself, they'll be subject to kind of some of the same regulations. However, as I noted earlier, when there's a conflict with safety, if it's, you know, necessary for either fire access or safety to light, like an exit, then there will be lighting there.
Okay. Okay, Kevin. First things, I was taking notes as we asked questions. All right, you'd talked about setbacks, and how come the footprint and stuff like that? Truly, all of that is contained in the subdivision regulations that required setbacks for the lot size. And that is gonna be dictated by what is in those subdivision regulations when you come to build, lay it out, and get a building permit. That's how that is managed. So if we know our subdivision regulations, that would have been a question that would have been answered. Accessory buildings, that is only available on certain sized lots. Correct.
That is correct.
Yes.
That's a detached, what Commissioner Buck was referring to was an integrated.
Is that what you're talking about, integrated?
That was his question, correct.
Could you repeat that with the microphone, please?
That is the distinction. When it's integrated into a single building, it doesn't count as a separate unit. But if it's detached, it is a separate unit.
Okay, yes, because then it becomes an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yes, okay. All right, so... Okay, let me go into things. So, I too, and I'll go into my biggest issue is that I did have concerns because I'm worried about a lot of development coming in. And I was worried, and this was a while ago. This is when we heard EC West. I'm concerned about starting the development, running into economical downtimes, and then maintaining it, and what's gonna happen. So I did. I went and asked the developers. I went and talked to a number of them. And really, the way it's defined and described, it's a well-managed process because you never outlay more than what you're gonna plan coming in. And that, and one, there's a developer, a local developer, that has managed that well through a long downturn in our economy out here. And they did it with effective metro district management. So that set my mind at ease, knowing that your initial investment, you've probably got already in the bank to do your infrastructure and stuff like that. That's gonna get you started. But then you're gonna have to build, each filing is then gonna have to come on. And you explained it, that it's gonna have to come on strategically because you'll only be able to fund certain amounts, and then you'll have to fund the offsite improvements to go on. So hopefully, you'll never get in a position, and it'll probably be explained by Mr. Anderson back there in your metro districts, which I hope you folks can stick around with and understand. But, it will be explained there as to how it can effectively manage the growth of this. And I think you put on your thing 20-year build-out. Really, folks, I see that, I actually do. Kind of seeing what I'm seeing now with homes here in the sale market, I'm thinking that, that's probably longer. I think that is a minimum. Do you have that same belief?
So, and just to be clear, there's kind of two build-out horizons. One is for us selling lots, and the other is then to build homes on top of those.
Right, right.
Right. And so I think for us to sell through the lots is probably a 20-year horizon, 20 or 25-year. The building, adding houses on the end, because as we get through a master plan community, the risk goes down and the value goes up. And so we'll be able to sell maybe 100 lots on the back end. Where a builder now, we don't start to develop lots until we have builders signed up with non-refundable deposits to buy those lots. And then we develop them, and they pay for the development as we go.
Okay.
And so our risk mitigation, and this is not into the district because the district builds the backbone, they build the roads, water and sand. And we will phase that. That risk is all on the people who purchase those bonds. If we can't pay those bonds, then, and there are mechanisms in that whole process. It's very complicated, and Mr. Anderson's very, very knowledgeable in that world. But they mitigate their risk from their financial investment. It doesn't come back to the county, it doesn't come back to the neighbors, it doesn't come back to our residents. Our residents are protected by the state in the cap of how many mills we can charge them. We can't just go, hey, it's gone slower, we're gonna now charge you above a maximum that's stated. And again...
Your metro districts are capped, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, you actually answered my question in stating that that 20-year build-out time is not... That's not when you're gonna have all the homes on that development, that's just gonna win.
And the risk for us would be if we did develop, put roads in everywhere...
Try to put the whole thing in.
Did all of that, and then we couldn't sell them, that's correct.
And you're not planning on doing that?
We are not going to do that.
Okay. And that is what I determined from other developers understanding it. And that's how I understood how they can phase it in and keep going in the economic downturns and up, and surges, so what have you. Okay. Then I went to see truly, the other question is, all right, how many homes are we building out here in this county? So I went to the building department, I think last year, was it 170?
240 approximate building permits last year. And that was more or less the same figure from the year prior, so fairly consistent in the last couple of years.
So, we're seeing building permits, we're seeing just over 200 building permits, 240 coming through an annually.
Right, for new homes. And as the applicant has described, in production home building in a master plan community, if you get 100 or 150 homes vertical in a year, you know, that's a good year.
That's a good year.
It's a slow go.
But in that 240 also includes those who want to build their own home. Those, everybody...
That is correct, yeah.
Every 10-acre lot, every 5-acre lot, everybody, okay. So that gave me an idea on how many homes we're actually seeing out here. Okay, phasing the... Now, back to the point that was brought up about internal departments not replying to these requests. Every, and I went through this, I've experienced this, and it is frustrating. For two and a half years, I experienced this. Is that you sent out these applications, they went to every department in the county, and you got half of them back with a reply. And I can see it hasn't changed. So, the blame, and I will say, does not go to CDS because they are sent. The blame, where it lies, is the department that receives the application. They should be responding. And back then, this was in '16 through '19, we encountered the same problem consistently and consistently from the sheriff.
Hey, can I answer that real quick?
You can, but I'm just telling you...
Not in regards to the sheriff, just in regards to the way it's presented on the document here. They have no objections, and then they have no response. So I thought, no response means they just didn't flat-out respond, and we didn't get, you know... I was like, well, why didn't they just say no objection?
So, here's, and I'll even answer that.
Maybe we need to have a different policy on how that's presented, I don't know.
Then that would be a good idea. But what we actually did, and this was in '17, we had two big, well, you know the developments. We had come in, and we didn't get a reply. We actually went over and then asked them to, come on, give us some input. What do you need here, what kind of stuff?
Or just say no objection.
And I know, they say no objections.
That's all you gotta say. But don't just blow it off and not respond at all, what are we doing? This is development, it's too important to do that.
So it's internal where our departments in this county need to pay attention to the growth that's going on, all of them.
And if they don't have an objection, they need to state that.
And they need to state that.
Not just no response and just blow it off. I think that's irresponsible.
But I wanted to say, because one, I wanted, a little bit defensive of CDS because they send those applications to everybody, and we, this was a frustrating thing we went through three, four years ago. It was so frustrating, because these were controversial developments coming in.
Yeah.
And we didn't get any replies. So I can see it hasn't changed, and I hope when you get in there, you can change it.
Oh, we'll get some replies, we'll get some replies.
So, now, okay, Elbert County, you did a really good water proposal here and showed everything. How much water does Elbert County use in our groundwater system? Do you know?
I actually don't know that answer. What we had is what was available.
Right.
And, you know, we're 2/10ths of 1% of that amount. But I don't know how much is actually like, and I'm not sure that data's available. I am, I do sit on a water commission.
Did you?
Like wells in rural areas, they aren't metered and they aren't monitored, so I don't know that, that's, it's an issue broader than this county, it's in the entire state.
That is, it is.
They don't know how to monitor that because people don't want you to come onto their property and meter and, you know, monitor their wells.
Okay, and something, I don't know if it's gonna come out here soon. I'm hoping this water study comes out soon. What I am hearing back is that Elbert County, and I hate to even say this because I haven't read the document yet, but it was reflected on the previous water study we did, which nobody paid attention to. But at that time, Elbert County, I thought, used less than 7% of the groundwater available in the aquifers below us.
Yeah, there's a lot of math in there. There's, you know, when you say the aquifer's below us, and it moves, and as Bruce said, it's not like a bowl of water, or a glass of water.
Right.
It's impack sands in between these layer, impervious layers between the quote aquifers. Again, what he quantified was what we call the basin storage, which is kind of what accumulates under there. And it is 800,000-plus acre feet. You know, we're 2,400 units here, and on the 300-year rule, we're about 400 acre feet. So, you know, that's, some of that water, to be clear, is in lower aquifers within the Denver basin, but lower aquifers that are probably not practical for a 35-acre well to drill down to. So, yeah.
Okay, the point I'm really looking at here is the previous study actually detailed out till 2050. I think it went that far out to water usage and calculated the growth up to, I do not remember the numbers. But at that point in time, that study, I think, indicated that Elbert County uses, and I think it was less than 7% of the water in these aquifers below us. So the question I have is if we're only using 7%, where is it all going? It's not going here. Going west of us, yeah. And I mean, they're using all the water. So, we want to control the water, how do you control anything when they only use 7% of it? So that's a question to everybody out there because water's always an issue. It's frustrating for me, I've got other ideas, but that's an issue with water. But these, with your reclamation system, is probably the most efficient use of water. And I think this is it currently, this process, is it in independence? Correct?
That is correct.
And I don't know if Spring Valley has gone on board with this, I'm not sure. Do you know?
They, I do know, they are intending to do that. And they are intending to not bring it back to the house, but bring it to, like, common area, open space, but reuse it outdoor in other ways.
Okay.
We're the only one that brings it back to the house.
Back to the house, and recycles it back through. Your fire protection system, it's gonna be a hydrant community, correct?
I'm sorry.
Hydrant community?
Yes, yes.
Fire hydrants.
Yeah, so it's a fully municipal system that will have fire flows and hydrants. That is correct.
Okay. Okay. See, I did have something I wanted to say. You know, the comments about doesn't fit and comprehensive plan, and I guess that's a personal thing. I don't need to go into that, so, anyway. I am fully for people coming into the county. We need people, we need young people, we need families. Pure and simple, we need families in our county. And I'm open, move in next to me, I'm good. So, but that doesn't affect the vote. What, and we did, we were having a development right next to me, and I welcomed it. I'm good with it. So, that's me personally. Actually, the way I look at this application is you've complied with code throughout the whole thing. Okay, I think in some areas, you've gone over. That's what I use to base what I'm evaluating, or what I'm looking at on your application, so. so, my personal opinion is kinda out the window, so, anyway. Alright, any more comments? Okay, we have two votes. We have to vote on, we have to vote on the PUD, correct? And we have to vote on the preliminary plat.
That's correct, Mr. Chair, both those independently, please, thank you.
Okay, so, if we could, can I get a motion on the PUD?
Sorry, microphones, I can't hear what's going on.
So, am I allowed to, Van, Van?
So move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go down, go down the row, we'll do an independent vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'm sorry, could you begin the vote once again?
No.
If we could start again with Van on the vote. Van, you were a nay. I'm sorry, I, I need everyone to give their vote again, please.
Van, you were a?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Okay.
Nay.
No?
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Okay, that is the, now this vote, just to give you, well, let me, let's go through the next one, the next one should be pretty much the same, we're gonna preliminary plat.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the preliminary plat for PP 20246327.
Okay, thank you, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, down the row. Van?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, I'm not hearing the microphones.
You see?
Which one do you, which one do you want to do first?
Let's start back up with Van, please.
I'm sorry, aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
No.
No.
Thank you, I have your votes.
Okay, now, after these votes, folks, that's a vote on these two items, all this is, is a recommendation, this goes to the board. So please, go to the board and voice all your concerns, because that is where you'll be certain that they are heard. Okay, let's take a recess for a minute, and then we'll go into the service plat.
I think we heard all the concerns, just to be sure.
What's that? They need to go to the board, though. Yeah, and I want-
Okay.
Oh.
He's a smart dude, damn.
They are, but they, they're really. Tell you what, that is our, that's been this county's saving grace, I kid you not. Because, because these metro districts are what's funding all the improvements within it, and the county hasn't had to pay for it. It's all centered on bid, I mean, it has been, because there's no way county can afford to pay roads. And crap, then with what these do, then their outside improvements. Heck, we haven't had a road built by anything else, other, anybody else other than a developer here in the last ten years. Well, and that's, that's on the county. Anyway.
Chairman, you ready to begin the meeting?
Okay. Folks, we'll get started. We've got one more thing. We've got the service plans for the, the metro districts, which are the funding source for that whole community. So, I believe it will start, Mark, with you, correct? Okay, please.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners, staff, fellow citizens, Mark DeGrae, Director of Community and Economic Development. We are going to present the ECE Metropolitan District Service Plans. The applicant is proposing to create ECE Metropolitan Districts, one through five, a commercial district, an industrial district, an overlay district, and also a water and sanitation district. The landowner is Colorado Ranch and Land Holdings LLC. The applicant representative is Jim Yates. This property, you can see here, is located on Kiowa Bennett Road, between County Road 166 and County Road 178. The process for this, we have the Planning Commission, it started on August 20th, and as we know, it was continued to tonight, which is August 22nd, 2024. October 9, 2024 is the date for the Board of County Commissioners to hear this case. The referral process for Metro District Service Plans goes to, to two entities. One is Butler Snow, this is for legal analysis, for statutory requirements. And the other, other one is Anderson Analytics. Anderson does a financial review, you're gonna hear more from Graham Anderson, who's seated beside me here in a few minutes, and go into some good detail on, on the financial aspects of it. Anderson Analytics does the review for these proposals to establish and verify the financial standards. In the land use regulations for Elbert County, there's some review criteria, this is Article, what is that, 14D of the Elbert County zoning regulation, states that all service plan applications shall be reviewed using criteria that's actually established and outlined in state statute. The Board of County Commissioners shall disapprove the service plan unless evidence satisfactory to the Board of each of the following is presented. There is sufficient existing and projected need for organized service in the area. Also, the existing service in the area to be served by the proposed special district is inadequate. Continue on here with the review criteria. The proposed special district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area. The area to be included in the proposed special district has or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness. There are also five additional items that need to be considered by state statute. One is adequate service is not or will not be available to the area through the county or other existing municipal or quasi-municipal corporations, including existing special districts, within a reasonable time and on a comparable basis. Moving on, the facility and service standards of the proposed special district are compatible with the facility and service standards of each county within which the proposed special district is to be located. The C, the proposal is in substantial compliance with a master plan adopted pursuant to Section 30-28106 CRS, that's Colorado Revised Statutes. Next, we have the proposal is in compliance with any duly adopted county, regional, or state long-range water quality management plan for the area. E, the creation of a special district will be in the best interests of the area. Moving along to the findings, the Planning Department does recommend the Planning Commission find the following. I'll read the, these here. Number one, there is sufficient existing and projected need for organized service in the area to be serviced by the districts. And the districts, the districts are capable, I'm sorry, the existing service in the area to be served by the district is inadequate for present and projected needs. And number three, the districts are capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within their proposed boundaries. Continuing on, number four, the proposal is compatible with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area. Number five, the area to be included in the districts does have or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. Number six, adequate service is not or will not be available to the area through the county or other existing municipal or quasi-municipal corporations, including special districts, within a reasonable time and on a comparable basis. Number seven, the facility and service standards of the districts are compatible with the facility and service standards of the county within which the districts are located, and each municipality which is an interested party under the following section, under Colorado Revised Statutes. Number nine, we've got the proposal is in compliance with any duly adopted county or regional or state long-range water quality manageable plan for the area. And then number 10, the creation of the districts will be in the best interest of the area proposed to be served. The recommendation that we have here, the Planning Department does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the nine Metro District Service Plans to the Board of County Commissioners. This does conclude my very brief presentation. Next, we have Graham Anderson from Anderson Analytics, he's going to go into, again, the detail of the service plans, the nine of them, and he is representing staff in, in his capacity here, presenting tonight, and I'll let him introduce himself. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham Anderson with Anderson Analytics. If you'll just give me a second so I can hook up my computer here. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commission. Again, Graham Anderson, Senior Analyst with Anderson Analytics, 1516 North Nevada Avenue, Colorado Springs. I probably don't need to go back to the vicinity map or the plan map here. Just summary of the build-out summary shown in the financial plans. 2,450 residential units, 188,000 square feet of commercial slash retail, and just under 231,000 square feet of industrial. The commercial industrial delivered, shown in the financial plan, this is conceptual from 2030 to 2040, and the build-out period, again, conceptual in the financial plan from 2027 to 2044. So, starting with districts numbers one through five, commercial and industrial, these are termed the infrastructure districts, multiple districts to allow for flexibility and development and bond issuance phasing, basically so that the districts in the project can respond to housing and bond market conditions. I just want to note that the commercial metro district, the industrial metro district, that's just nomenclature. All of these are metro districts. In fact, really, the service plans are essentially clones of each other. For the infrastructure districts, that just denotes the particular districts. The infrastructure districts would be authorized to utilize general obligation bond financing. General obligation means property tax and mill levy established by the district used to pay the bonds of that district, and that general obligation financing to fund eligible public improvements of the districts. The proposed aggregate service plan debt limit of all of these infrastructure districts combined is 185,535,000. Aggregate means, say, one district issues 184 million. The remainder for, among the rest of the districts will be 1.535 million. So it's basically one score, or scoreboard for all of the infrastructure districts combined. The proposed debt levy, debt levy would be capped at 55.664 mils, adjustable for legislative changes in the method of calculating assessed value so that revenues are neither diminished nor enhanced. So, really, the base year or the base assessment rates for making that debt levy adjustment is established at the 7.15% residential and the 29% commercial. Two reasons for that, one, because property tax policy is getting so complicated, if we start setting it at more recent years, we have to do a heck of a lot more math. And the second reason for that is that this is the same debt levy authorization as EC West, and I believe for Independence as well. I've illustrated how you do that debt levy cap adjustment for the changes in assessed value there. Important, these establish a maximum 40-year debt levy imposition term. So if one of the infrastructure districts, once they start imposing the debt levy, they have a 40-year clock. In order, just technically, in order for any of those districts to impose their debt levy longer than 40 years, they would have to go back to the Board of County Commissioners for a vote, and that could only be in connection with the refunding of existing debt, resulting in a net present value savings as defined in statute. The debt levy is authorized, what's called limited convertible to unlimited, which means that the debt levy may be adjusted higher if necessary to make required bond payments if and only once outstanding bond total is less than 50% of the pledged district's total assessed value. I should note that this was authorized for EC West, it was authorized for Independence, though in fact, Independence first, bond issuance did not actually pledge that feature to their bonds, you don't have to pledge it. Spring Valley, several other metro districts in Elbert County, it's not a universal provision, but it's a fairly common provision. Pledging it to bonds can help improve their marketability and their interest rates, but of course, it does effectively shift potential risk from bondholders potentially to property owners. Shifting over, the operations and maintenance mill levy for the infrastructure districts is proposed to be uncapped or unlimited. Now, the financial plan shows an anticipated operations and maintenance levy of 11.113, that's basically 10 mils adjusted from 7.15. The applicant indicates that the uncapped levy for this, as well as for EC West, is approved for EC, EC West as well, is for these districts being the first master plan communities in Elbert County to own and maintain all their internal roads. An abatement mill levy is also authorized, abatement levy means it's usually a very minuscule mill levy that can be imposed a year after to offset any refund slash abatements. For example, the county's abatement levy is 0.016 mils, fire districts, park and rec districts, a lot of them have abatement mill levies as well, they're almost universally tenths or hundreds of a mil. And then finally, you've seen this before with EC West and some other approvals, I'll just read through it. With prior written consent of the county, special assessments may be imposed on developer-owned property only to help finance public improvements via a special improvement district. And those special, those, those special assessments must be satisfied and cleared, fully paid off prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. So it's basically the developer imposing a special assessment on themselves on their own vacant land. Again, you may ask, why would they do that? It's basically a conduit to tax-exempt financing for eligible public improvements there. It's a type of debt that the developer pays, not homeowners. Switching over, I went through the infrastructure districts, this is the overlay metro district. You've seen this similar setup before in some other communities in Elbert County. The overlay metro district is proposed to be formed to perform covenant enforcement and design review in lieu of an HOA under Title 32, as well as to own, operate, and maintain certain park and recreation, open space landscaping, and storm drainage improvements in the community. So no HOA means no HOA fee. The overlay district's operations and maintenance levy is proposed to be capped at 20 mils, again, adjustable from the 7.15 and 29% assessment rates. Now, the service plan indicates that the overlay district's operations and maintenance levy is anticipated to be 15 mils. I believe in Independence as well, currently, it's only 15 mils established as well. Additionally, the overlay district may impose a fee of $25 per month on builder-owned lots. An abatement mill levy is also authorized, and the overlay district has no debt authorization, so the overlay district has no debt levy. Continuing on, really, the function of the overlay district, the overlay district may also establish a, a system of fees, rates, tolls, charges for service, for example, a swimming pool or community center. That's to cover the costs of service, of course, fees cannot be used for general revenue raising purposes, that's a constitutional requirement in Colorado, they can only be used to offset particular service or facility costs. This has been highlighted before, all of these are metro districts, so that means that all of the community amenities financed by these districts are public improvements, just quote from the service plan, "All open space and park and recreation improvements shall be open for use by the general public." And the developer indicates that some of these overlay district amenities are anticipated include a community center with swimming pool, gathering rooms, educational spaces, as well as outdoor amenities, trails, parks, tot lots, open space shelters, et cetera. Finally, switching over, this is not a metro district, this is also a Title 32 district with one purpose, water sanitation district. with one purpose, water sanitation district. The proposed debt authorization for the water and sanitation district is a revenue bond authorization, not general obligation, so no property taxes. Revenue bond authorization amount of one hundred forty-two point three-six million. Those bonds would be paid by tap and facility fees, again kind of similar to a special assessment paid by the home builder or commercial builder at construction, and those would pay the special revenue bonds issued by the district. The anticipated total tap and facility fees are the same for, as well as anticipated actually what are charged in Independence. Fifty-two thousand per residential unit, and the commercial building kind of represents an average that would probably be based off of the building size. And both are shown in the financial plans, and this is Independence's current fee resolution at four point five percent inflation per year. Again, no mill levy. In fact, the service plan explicitly says no property taxes shall be pledged for payment of the district's bonds. The second function of the water and sanitation district is to provide ongoing water and sanitation service to the development in the EC East community. The service plan indicates anticipated sewer service charge, or anticipated water charges of a hundred dollars a month and sewer of sixty dollars per month. The applicant indicates that they are currently utilizing the rates and rate study from Independence, that's what's shown in the water and sanitation district service plan, and a similar model will be built for EC East. This is the summary of the estimated total cost of public improvements of all of the districts of the EC East community, shown in the service plans. Bottom line, with contingency and soft cost estimates, five hundred seventy-eight million. Total direct cost, just under three hundred seventy million. One that I would highlight, landscape irrigation amenities, pretty sizable, one hundred six million. And finally, the one that I would highlight at the top, the first line, off-site road improvements and traffic signals. The applicant has provided this graphic for me. I should highlight, this is of course preliminary and subject to change as plaits are engineered, it's subject to final approval by the county, and this is not an official service plan exhibit, it's meant for educational and illustrative purposes of what some of these off-site improvements are that would be funded by the metro districts. And you can kind of see in purple and red there, roadway improvements there, and then circles with little numbers, intersection improvements. I'm not an engineer, so I won't go into depth with this, and I'd refer to you to the applicant if you had more questions about that. Another summary of the public improvement costs, the table at the top, I'd highlight that about half of those are associated with water, sanitarian, storm sewer, and then the other public improvement costs, roads, landscape, amenities, et cetera, just under fifty percent there. Now, of course, this anticipated public improvement cost is higher than the proposed service plan debt authorization amounts there. If you add the infrastructure districts and water sanitation districts there, that's about three hundred twenty-eight million. Also, when you issue bonds, you have cost of issuance and reserve costs, so you don't fully yield that three hundred twenty-eight million. So quoting from the proposed service plans, "Improvements not funded by the infrastructure districts or water and sanitation districts shall remain the responsibility of the developer of the property. The county is not responsible for assuming any of the costs for the design, acquisition, construction, completion, installation of the improvements." The proposed slash anticipated mill levy in the EC East districts here, I presented this in tax year '23, payable this year, certified mill levies. So of course, it's in Albert County. Again, it's in Kiowa School District, Albert County Library, as well as Kiowa Fire Protection District, so those existing entities are just under fifty-nine mils, which is a lower base mill levy than, for example, if you go into Elizabeth School District, or if you go into Douglas County School District. EC East, the anticipated mill levies from the districts. What I've shown you here is the debt levy cap adjusted to the six point seven percent residential assessment rate, so fifty-five point six-six-four, adjust that to fifty-nine point four-oh-two. The operations and maintenance levy for the infrastructure districts, again, that is uncapped. I've shown the anticipated levy from the service plans, as well as the anticipated levy for the overlay district. The overlay district is capped at twenty mils at seven point one-five percent, adjustable again. So if you add that, add all of that up, that's about a hundred forty-four point four mils there. Again, no HOA fee. Just for some context here, the total mill levy in tax year '23 in Independence, because that's in Elizabeth School District, Elizabeth Park and Rec, it's just under a hundred fifty-six mils. Some of the other metro districts, in the town of Elizabeth, Gold Creek Valley, Rotoroo is about a hundred sixty-seven mils, E-86 Metro District is about a hundred fifty-five. The Spring Valley districts are between a hundred forty-seven and a hundred fifty-two mils, except the one that's in Douglas County Schools, that's a hundred sixty-four mils. So hopefully that provides a little bit of context as to what this proposed and anticipated mill levy means. Example, anticipated residential property tax using those mill levies there. The existing entities, well, first I should highlight that the single-family home value that I'm showing here is the average among all of the single-family units in the financial plan, so about six hundred nine thousand in current valuation. Under current tax policy, we have that fifty-five thousand dollar exemption, so I've shown that there. So, bottom line, existing taxing entities about just under twenty-two hundred tax bill in a year, and then proposed, anticipated for EC East is, would be in this example, three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. I've done the same here. For an example, commercial property tax on a per-square-foot basis. The commercial market value that I've shown here is really the weighted average from the service plan. Service plan shows commercial retail at two hundred seventy-five dollars a square foot, industrial a hundred seventy-five dollars a square foot. So existing entities about three, three dollars forty a square foot, and proposed, anticipated for EC East, four dollars eighty-nine a square foot. So switching over to really, reason why I'm here, and I got mixed up in this, review of the financial plan. So, really the one requirement, our standard, that's within our purview of review, the rest of them are within the purview of Butler Snow, the attorneys there. Would be the one there at the bottom, "The area to be included in the proposed special district has or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis." Those last two words are, really the word reasonable there is kind of the core of our review, is the financial plan based upon reasonable assumptions. Kind of putting it in a different way, this is really the question we ask. Does the financial plan demonstrate that the districts have the projected financial capacity to issue and pay off the full proposed service plan debt authorization amount, meaning the hundred eighty-five point five-three-five million general obligation for the infrastructure districts, and for the water and sanitation district, the one hundred forty-two point three-six million? There are kind of two sides of this when we're reviewing it. One would be the projection of revenues available for debt service, which is really kind of within the purview, or really the board here is more of an expert on this than I am, because you're looking at the build-out as well as the projected property values. Certainly, you know your community better than I do. The other side here, which drives the financing capacity that you can kind of show on paper or with math, is the bond financing assumptions, AKA the interest rate, the debt service coverage ratio, the bond structure. That's kind of where I come here and essentially make some comments as to whether they're reasonable or not. So this summarizes the residential build-out schedule shown in the financial plans. Again, a total of two thousand four hundred fifty residential units, forty-foot, fifty-foot, sixty-foot, single-family detached, cluster duplex, townhome, and multifamily attached. The build-out period shown here, from 2027 to 2044, that averages out to about a hundred forty-five units per year if you average the total over that full build-out. Another important one here is the assumed inflation and market values of these properties. As everybody knows, property values tend to go up over time, that also often raises property taxes as well. So the financial plan assumes three percent annual inflation in these market values before that unit is delivered, and then after that unit is delivered, the financial plans assume six percent biennial, because we're under biennial every other year reassessment. Just for context as to what the residential is bringing to the financing capacity versus the commercial and the financial plan, at build-out, the residential assessed value here is shown to comprise about eighty-three percent of the total assessed value in EC East, and the residential generates about eighty-six percent of the total property tax revenues over the forty-year bond period. I've shown this graph many times here. This is the historical annual home value appreciation in Albert County to kind of put into context whether that three percent annual and six percent biennial is reasonable. So if you look at the ten-year, twenty-year, thirty-year, and forty-year average annual appreciation, all of those are over three percent a year. The commercial build-out shown in the financial plans, a hundred eighty-eight thousand square feet of commercial retail at two hundred fifty dollars a square foot market value. I would define that's probably pretty conservative if you're looking at, for example, F and B uses, medical uses, you know, restaurant could be five hundred to a thousand a square foot. Medical uses also tend to have rather high market values per square foot. And the industrial is probably fairly conservative there as well. At build-out, the commercial AV comprises just under seventeen percent of the total assessed value. So, switching over to the bonds shown in the financial plans. So first, I should say, when there's a multi-phase financial plan and project here, the financial plan, the bonds here typically show a generic slash numerical series of bond issuances here. It's, you know, essentially to kind of show the ultimate financing capacity, recognizing that when you have these multiple districts here, the bond phasing would be in response to market conditions. So essentially, it's showing the aggregate financing capacity. Now, in a lot of the other ones that I've presented to this board here, the underwriters have shown something, you've probably heard me talk about refunding the new money. They've saved us the headache of this, and so there's a forty-year debt levy imposition term here. So in 2028, they've shown a ten-year bond issuance that gets paid off, and then after that, in 2039, it's showing a thirty-year bond issuance. So, just stepping here through the sources and uses, under Series 2028, the par amount of bonds, that means the total amount of bonds shown being issued, about thirty-one point five million there. And then if you go below there, you can see that there are issuance costs, but the net proceeds for eligible costs there, about twenty-three point two million. Same process there, over under the Series 2039, a par amount of just under a hundred fifty-four million there. So if you add those par amount of bonds together in that blue line, you see the hundred eighty-five point five-three-five million. That equates to the aggregate general obligation debt authorization amount among the infrastructure districts. So that's what we're looking for there. The Series 28, ten-year bond issuance, they're assuming a five-and-a-half percent interest rate, often called a coupon rate. They're also showing that average debt service coverage of one point zero-three-five, and they're showing those bonds paying off with an extra balance there, so basically extra coverage there. Almost four point five million surplus fund balance once Series 28 is paid off. The Series 2039, thirty-year bond issuance, they're showing at a six-and-a-half percent assumed coupon rate. Average annual debt service coverage ratio is one point one-two times, and it's shown amortizing in 2068 with an extra thirty-six point eight-five million surplus fund balance. So again, that's some extra coverage there. And then finally, I wanted to note that the financial plan actually sized the residential levy here at fifty-five point six-six-four mils at the six point seven assessment rate, so that's actually lower than the proposed, or debt levy cap when you do that adjustment. So that's also additional debt service coverage. So my comments here are pretty limited. I would say that this mix of bond interest rates and debt service coverage ratios, if you kind of translate that into, what am I calling, real-world bond issuance structures, that's probably representative of current municipal bond market conditions, and we're not in a really great municipal bond market right now. So I guess my overall conclusion would be that these key parameters, which underlie the demonstrated bond capacity here, are really pretty conservative compared to other recent service plan approvals, not just in this jurisdiction but elsewhere. I must say that behind the scenes, sometimes I have some discussions with underwriters about what may or may not be a reasonable assumption as to what a bond coupon rate is. I didn't have those discussions here, because I would say that's representative, really of current municipal bond market conditions. Switching over here quickly, water and sanitation district, fifty-two thousand per unit anticipated tap and system development fees. This is the same for Independence, as well as what was anticipated for EC West. Fees shown inflating by four-and-a-half percent annually, that's actually per Independence' water and sanitation district's fee resolution. Same structure here for the water and sanitation district. I won't step through all of this again, but par amount of bonds, a hundred forty-two point three-six million. The revenue bond authorization amount, a hundred forty-two point three-six million. Now, you're probably asking here, how could you have a forty-year bond there when the source of revenues there are tap fees and the anticipated build-out period is through 2044? So basically, what their financial plan is showing is, as those tap fees are coming in, we have those scheduled bond payments over here, but if more tap fees are coming in, there's basically a fund on the side there, a surplus fund essentially. So, actually, I'll just illustrate that here. The Series 2028, ten-year bond issuance, the financial plan shows those bonds paying off in 2038 with a surplus fund balance of eighty-eight point five-five million. So what the financial plan does is takes that eighty-eight point five-five million surplus fund balance over to a Series 2038. You have the scheduled payments on the Series 2038. You also have tap fees coming in through 2044, and after 2044, essentially, that eighty-eight million-plus surplus fund balance is utilized, kind of drawn down to make all of the scheduled bond payments through 2068. And this financial plan shows the Series 2038 paying off with an extra surplus fund balance of over three million. So again, my comments here would be that those bond coupon rates are generally representative, probably, of current municipal bond condition. probably, of current municipal bond conditions. And going back to my rather convoluted explanation there of that surplus fund and the TAP fees and coming in, really kind of in regard to showing financing capacity, I would say that's a conservative bond structure there versus, for example, if the bonds were shown with just a 16- or 20-year term, or if they were shown what's often called a cash flow bond structure, which means to the extent that the revenues come in, you can pay as much principal off as possible. The reason for that is you have the TAP fees coming in the first 16 or 17 years, and then you have those final 24 years of scheduled payments in which essentially it's showing, essentially, you're paying interest on that. So again, from really my review perspective there in terms of the financing capacity being demonstrated, that's probably another conservative factor here. My final comment, of course, would be the actual bond parameters and structure would reflect market conditions at the time of issuance. Again, the financial plan is a quote "numerical demonstration" of the financing capacity under key build-out and bond financing parameter assumptions. And finally, I'm not going to go through these with all of you, but I do have two-page summaries of the various bond issuances in the packet rather than having to go through 30 pages. So I'm done, and I appreciate your time and attention at this late hour. Can you refresh my memory and tell me the bond payments through when? The financial plan shows it through 2068. So the financial plan assumes issuance in 2028, 40-year period through 2068. Of course, that's not a hard, fast requirement.
I understand that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Two questions.
Kevin.
Can we have copies of this? Well, I went through here. I can't find it.
I'm happy to share copies. I have my copy here.
No, I would just like to have the screenshot or the PowerPoint sometime. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Where it is? I don't have it.
So real quick, the ONM mill levy was uncapped. Because it's uncapped, does that mean it's open for use for contingencies in some cases?
The operations and maintenance mill levy for the infrastructure districts is proposed to be uncapped. Essentially, yes. As to really the details as what would be anticipated there, I'd probably refer you to the applicant there. Really, the bottom line, though, is that the board of the infrastructure district could set that mill levy as they see fit.
Okay, so it's adjustable, and it may be contingency-based. It may be just conditions of the time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Financial plan shows 185 million base. Is that in today's money only? Future state of money would be significantly more than that usually.
185 million would be the par amount of bonds. That wouldn't change in accordance to inflation or anything like that. I'm also sorry, I'm really, I'm having a really hard time hearing with the acoustics here, so.
No worries, sorry. And then TAP fees, I noticed the difference between industrial and the housing units. Is it TAP fees for each apartment unit, or is that for the main building for the apartment?
The financial plan shows that per apartment unit. Obviously, that would be at the discretion of the board of the Water and Sanitation District. Again, I'd probably defer you to the applicant as what we'd exactly be anticipating for multifamily units. I could imagine there being an adjustment there, of course.
Okay, then I'll ask the applicant as well. Yeah, if you don't mind.
There we go. Was the question related to the...
Each individual apartment unit, will the TAP fee be 52,000 per each individual apartment or for the complex itself?
They are, so all the residential units are per unit, but there is a factor, a single-family detached is a full single-family equivalent, and an apartment would be a one-half equipment. But those are all, only the commercial is based on a different metric than a per unit. It's based on the pipe size that come in if you get a 1-inch or a 2-inch connection for a commercial.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one question in regards to the language of the contract, not in the numbers, so I don't know if that would be appropriate to ask now or who I would ask that to.
The contract's not being...
The...
The application not being numbered?
No, the service contract, Water and Sanitation District Service Plan. Would you be able to, he's not an attorney, that would be for an attorney question.
I think...
It's not related to what he just spoke to, Danny, as far as the mathematics and the... So I don't know if that would be something we could ask.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt, an applicant, as you know, is here to present as well. So, thank you.
Okay. We got, okay, we got another part of it. All right. Will that answer the question?
Pardon me?
Will that answer your question?
Well, they might be able to answer the question.
We don't know.
We don't know. Let me, it's just a real quick, simple question. On page 687 of the service plan in our packet, the word "forego," "the district may defer, forego, reschedule, or restructure the financing construction of the improvements in order to better accommodate growth." You phase things in, is what that's saying. But you also have a paragraph where it deals directly with modifications of the service plan. Would the word "forego" be better put onto page 693? And they would have to come before the board for approval before they forego any improvements.
The reason that you have the language, the "forego" language in there is because that the service plans are required by state statute to show what we believe today to be the location and extent of improvements. But over, as you can imagine, over a 20- or 30-year period, for example, where we might put a lift station could change. So we would be foregoing one improvement and making other improvements instead. But the Water and Sanitation District is required to provide water, sanitation, storm drainage service to the entire community, and so that language is just meant to reflect that things change over time. We can't promise that the exhibits that you see today will be exactly what's going to be put in the ground 30 years from now.
Understood. It also mentions this is not an exclusive list of all actions that may be identified as material modifications. Where would that...
Well, that's something that's in state statute, so that's taken directly out of Title 32. But what it means is that if one of the districts is going to propose to do something, and we're like, well, we don't know, maybe it's a material modification, what it means is that we would then go to the county and say, do you think this is a material modification? Do you want us to do a service plan amendment, or do you think it's not? So it really puts the onus on the county to decide whether they want us to come forward with a service plan modification at a later date for something. We don't know what.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay. You got the cart before the horse here. We have another presentation. Miller, correct? Okay. Please.
Good job.
You're not?
I'm Diane Miller with the law firm of Miller Law, PLLC, and we are general counsel to the proposed districts. Jim Yates, as you already know, is also here as the applicant, and Chad Snyder with Strong Capital Markets prepared the underwriting and financial documents that Graham just took you through. I think you've probably seen this presentation before, so I'm going to go through it pretty speedy, but if at any time you need me to slow down, I will be happy to do that. I think one of the things that was actually discussed earlier tonight is that metropolitan districts provide great benefits to these larger developments that have a very long time horizon and need to be able to develop. It is the way here in Colorado that we ensure that growth is paying its own way and that other residents in the county or in the regional area generally are not the ones that are paying for all of the infrastructure and improvements that go along with the new development. Usually, there is no other public entity that wants to step up and do this. The cost of public improvements is reduced through the use of low-cost, tax-exempt financing, and it provides a proportionate impact for the people who actually live in the development because they're only paying the mill levies for the time that they're living there. Those people don't live in a development for 30 years. So if you're there for seven years, which is what's average in Colorado, you're paying taxes for that seven years, which is proportionate to the amount of time that you were using the facilities. We've been through this. The estimated total cost of public improvements is 578 million. Of that total, 289 million, almost half is the water and sanitary sewer services that will need to be put out in this development. The debt limit of the metro districts is $185 million, and so the remainder of public improvement costs that are not water and sand and are not under the debt limit remain the responsibility of the developer. The county is never responsible for costs of public improvements by these districts or of any debt issued by the districts. There are a lot of financial safeguards for districts that are part of statute in Colorado, and many people are not aware of this. But when bonds are issued by a district, that the money from those bonds, if we issue $100 million of bonds, that money doesn't go even, certainly doesn't go into the developer's account, and it usually doesn't even go into the district's account. It goes into an account that's held by a trustee, and the trustee is acting on behalf of both the districts and the bond purchasers. And so their obligation is to make sure that funds that are released are for actual public improvements and are in line with the service plan. Usually, before any funds can be released to a district, there is an independent engineering firm that has to look at the contracts and all the payments, and then they certify the costs as being appropriate for the work that was created. There are additional safeguards for districts and for the people who live in them. You know, there's a lot of disclosure notices that are both required by statute, and the service plan requires an annual report to be prepared and sent to the county, and that's available at the clerk and recorder's office for review. There's a lot of website disclosures, notices of meetings. All the documents and records of the district are up on the website. Contact information annually, debt information is put up so that people know what the status is of bond issuances, what mill levies are being imposed for the next year. And importantly, for people who live within a district, election information is available on the website so they know who the board of directors is, what the term of each board member is, and when there are positions open for someone who lives within a district to become a board member. As soon as you have property within the boundaries of a district, you are eligible to sit on the board. And as long as you're a Colorado resident, if you come from a foreign country and are not registered to vote in Colorado, you can't be on the board. But otherwise, you're eligible as soon as you purchase your property. Colorado sunshine laws require that meetings are always open to the public, not just to board, I'm sorry, not just to people within the district. They are open to the public. Regular elections are required every two years, and there is a special annual meeting for residential districts every year where we just talk about the districts. As Graham already told you, there are nine districts that are proposed for EC East. Five of these are residential metropolitan district. One will be a commercial metropolitan district. One is an industrial metropolitan district. The reason that you have all these various metropolitan districts is because of the length of time that this project is going to take to build out. And so as you're phasing development, you're also phasing which district is being used to align with that. Also, for commercial and industrial districts, there's often a sensitivity to mill levies that doesn't exist in residential districts, and by separating them, we're able to address that sensitivity. The overlay metropolitan district is in lieu of an HOA and is intended, over time and certainly by the end of build-out of this, to handle all operations and maintenance responsibilities for the entire project. And also, in this district, because it will undertake all street maintenance, the overlay district will have that responsibility as well. And then the One Water and Sanitation District handling all potable and non-potable water sanitation and storm drainage. Exhibit D, the service plan did detail the engineer's estimate of costs for this. There is an aggregate debt mill levy, as Graham has already told you, meaning that each district will contribute to the overall cost according to its financial ability to help with those bonds, and we've already gone through the costs of those. These districts will have typical statutory powers for streets, curves, gutters, drainage, alleys, sidewalks, storm, water and sewer mains, park and recreation. And in these districts, for example, the residential metropolitan district will have water and sewer powers, not because it's anticipated that they'll be providing monthly water and sewer service, but because they will contribute to the overall financing of those improvements if necessary. The county will take ownership and maintenance of the streets or roads that are outside the development, subject to acceptance by the counties, and this is County Road 29 and 174. The overlay district will own, operate, and maintain park and rec improvements, cultural and recreation amenities, and open space. The metropolitan districts, the water and sanitation, or the overlay district shall maintain storm drainage improvements in interior streets. That's just a recognition of how much revenue is required for those particular types of improvements. And the water and sanitation district will own, operate, and maintain all the water and sewer facilities. I think Graham has gone through this whole financial part of this for you, so I'm not going to go through it again, but if you do have any questions for us about how the projects being financed, we're happy to answer those questions. I will point out that the overlay district does not have any debt capacity, will not be issuing bonds. It is a district that is intended to maintain improvements within the district but not to issue debt for them. to issue debt for them. So the developer and the proposed districts are requesting a recommendation of approval from the planning commission. Currently, the service plans are anticipated to be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on October 9th of this year. And to answer one of the questions about the 185 aggregate, 185 million aggregate debt limit, that number does not adjust up. That's what's in the service plan, and that's the total amount of debt that can be issued by these districts. So, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Kate? Good. Okay. Mark, got anything?
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kate, down the row here. Questions? Nope?
Of course I do.
I know.
So who manages the trust for this development?
What do you mean by the trust?
Trust trustees.
The trustee of the bonds has to be a bank that has special trustee powers. They usually have to have a particular amount of reserve in their accounts as well. So UMB Bank in Denver, BOKF, those would be typical banks to handle trustee duties.
Sorry, it hasn't been picked yet. It's just, it'll be picked after we get this ball moving.
Yes.
Okay. And just one question back for staff. The conformance question in your presentation, Mark, as we're looking at this, I think it's conformance as it relates to the district, not the county. Is that correct? Or is it a little of both?
Pardon me. Pardon me. Could you please repeat the question? Are you asking something related to the presentation? With the, pardon me?
When you go through the conditions...
The, okay.
If you look at, I think number four was conformance. One of the number fours was conformance, and it was related, I was asking whether it was related to the districts themselves or just the county. If you'll pop your presentation up, I'll point out where I was looking.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you, sir.
I know I'm going to get real loud here, but if you look at the presentation that you did, it talks to conformance, and I'm just trying to figure out whether it's talking to conformance to the plan for the special districts or conformance to the plan for the county.
I'm looking for that specific item that you mentioned, and I will actually plug in the presentation, and just give me one moment, and then we can locate it and discuss it. Thank you.
That's the one I was looking for. Thanks. I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Did you need us to comment or respond on this one?
No, actually, the, if I'd have read the presentation a little better, it answered my question for me, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.
Eddie, do you have anything? No? Okay. One thing I did forego, apologize. Do we have public comment on this? Okay. Hearing done. Thank you. All right. With that, Eddie, you had no more questions?
I did not, sir.
Okay. So, all right, folks, no more presentations? Can I have a motion? Can we have a motion? Okay.
I make a motion that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they approve a resolution of approval, approving the restated service plans for EC West, or ECE, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second? Second. Okay, second. Any more discussion? Good? Down the row. Van.
Yes.
To remain consistent, nay.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Actually, I'm going to be inconsistent. Yes.
And I'm going to be inconsistent, which is no.
Commissioner Shock, raise. Could you repeat that into the microphone, please? So, no?
I'm a nay.
At this time? There is nothing else on our agenda. Thank you all for coming. Can I have a motion to adjourn so we can go home?
I would motion to be adjourned.
And I'll second it.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Thank you all.